It actually, it was pretty all.
That was pretty good.
All right, are we ready? Great, um, it's four thirty, so we're gonna go ahead and call the town council work session for July eighth to order. And we are going to start with the twenty twenty four Safety Champion Award. Get out and look, and we're with special thank you to Scott and Steve. Do you guys wanna come up, or how would you like to do this? Just go ahead, okay.
And then we'll.
Yes, ma'am. Um, do you mean the, the summary? Okay. The town of Breckenridge has been awarded the twenty twenty four Safety Champion Award by SIRSa for the Innovative Safety Program Goal, an acronym for Get Out and Look. Special recognition goes to Scott Jackman, Streets and Parks Manager and Steve Woodcock, Fleet Operator, for their leadership and innovation in safety. The entire safety committee is also recognized for outstanding implementation and ongoing management of an innovative safety program. So, thank you all very much. Get a photo with you guys if you, does anyone wanna? Are you? We're all standing up?
Right.
And then, I think maybe we, this is not gonna work behind, let's go around. It's gonna look really simple. Look like the town council. Yeah, let's try closer. Get squeezed in. A little bit more. All right, over here, give me big smile. Cheese. Sorry, I was raised in the Instagram age. All right, you're good. Thank you, pal. Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Right? All right, well, that's awesome. It's nice for SIRSa to be able to represent us for something so good and positive. So, thank you to the safety committee for getting us going on that. Okay, next up, planning commission decisions, and there weren't any, I believe, right?
There were not.
Meeting.
No meetings. All right, legislative review, ordinance approving amended and restated allo agreements, second reading.
Everyone, I'm here for, there's two second readings tonight. The first one is for the amended and restated fiber lease and network operation agreement between the town and allo communications. These amended amendments increase the revenue for our infrastructure investment, ensure the fiber ninety-six-hundred network continues to serve the needs of our community. There has been no changes since the first reading, and staff recommendation is that you approve it on second reading.
Great, any questions? Yeah.
I might, maybe for Keely. Hypothetically say if, if our fiber optic network through town became marketable to sell, may recoup some of the capital investment. Would this contract allow us to do that?
Yes, so the contract itself has a couple provisions regarding potential sale of the asset by the town. In the event that that does happen, the contract would go with it. So, this, this agreement would be, would continue to the new owner of the fiber, and then all of the terms and conditions would, would stay the same. This is a much better contract for the owner than the previous one. So, I think that would not be a hurdle in terms of sale. And then there's also a right of first offer to allo as part of this agreement that was in the original as well, where if we are going to sell the fiber network, we can propose, we can basically make an offer to allo to have them purchase it from us under our sort of terms and conditions and whatever, whatever we wanna include as part of that contract, and then they have an opportunity to accept that or not. If they don't, then we move forward with our other buyer.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else? All right, we're ready for that for tonight. Thank you, Chris, go ahead and with Comcast.
Yes, for second reading is the chise agreement for cable television services. This re-renewal maintains the town's oversight authority, reserves franchise fee revenues, and ensures continued support for public, educational, and government programming. There has been no changes since the first reading, and staff's recommendation is that you approve it on second reading.
Thank you. Any questions on this Comcast one? Okay, we're ready for that second reading as well? Thank you very much. Moving on to the manager's report, oh, manager's update.
So, Council, this was intended to be memo only unless you have specific questions. These are items that were shared with you in between the last meeting and this meeting, and so we're making them part of the public packet in order for the public to have this information as well.
I like it too, because then everybody hears it and not just a couple people. So, I think it's great. Any questions? Okay, public projects update, Shannon.
Good afternoon. I don't have anything in addition to the memo either, but I'm happy to take questions.
All right, a lot going on in here. Anybody have anything?
Chen, have you had any issues with the skate park expansion as far as with that contractor is that on schedule? And are they finding anything that is unusual?
I have not heard anything unusual, and it is going on schedule, maybe a little bit early, but we're not committing.
That's great.
Dangerous word.
That's why it's not written.
Anything else for Shannon?
Great, thank you.
Matt, mobility? Any questions?
We do have a little bit of mobility in the sustainability memo, so.
We do.
Not to be.
We'll do Teddy and Jesse for that. Sustainability.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, I only have one quick update for you, and that is that the town was awarded thirty-four thousand dollars by the Colorado Energy Office to move forward with a phase-two geothermal study for this campus here. We will bring that to you next meeting for a formal approval as they requested. And the deadline to accept that is June twenty-third. So, that is an update, and then Teddy is here to answer any e-ride questions, which I think you guys had a few. So, we're happy to answer those questions, and anything else not covered in the packet?
Who's got questions?
We answered them all, all right.
Good, do you wanna speak a little bit to the proposal to add another hub?
Yes, um, we are, you know, from last year to this year, one of the issues that we were hoping to address with the expansion of hubs and bikes is have minimizing empty hubs, so that whenever people need a bike, there's reliably one, one there. And so, we went a little heavy on the bike-to-hub ratio this year, to the point where now that we're a couple months into the program, we do think we have capacity to add one additional hub location to the system with our existing fleet of bikes. So, that's just, wanted to update you all. You know, we have had a couple of different housing HOAs reach out with interest. So, we're kinda going through conversations with those groups and are trying to evaluate options for trying to squeeze in one extra hub this season.
And do you think that those are better options than Beaver Run? Cause I know we also heard from some folks, maybe not Beaver Run themselves, I guess that's what you're waiting to understand if they want it up there?
Yes, Beaver Run could be considered. We don't have a town-owned parcel or right-of-way up there where we could squeeze a hub into and make it work. So, we really need a, a private property owner to host a hub. And we have reached out to the resort and to ask them, uh, last year we did the same, and they had to vet some agreements with bail resorts as well as insurance implications. Uh, so they declined for this year, but they said they're open to it in the future still. So, we're still waiting to hear back on that one.
Great.
Teddy, what are the criteria you're using, like when you meet with these, with you're trying to rule out HOAs? What criteria are you using to decide?
The factors that we look at, we always have, have made a point to prioritize any workforce housing. We also just look at general density. What is, you know, the number of people living within a two-minute walk of this location that can access it quickly? Less dense areas are, are less appropriate for a hub than more dense ones. And then we look at connecting infrastructure, places where people can ride to and egress from the hub location safely. We look at land ownership, does it, is it on a parcel that the town controls? If not, is it a private property owner that was, is willing to? So, those are just some of the things that we're all, you know, factoring in.
Thanks.
Each way is a vast for a hub.
There's two that are at the top of the list that have, uh, we were initiated conversations about hub planning for next year, and they are chomping at the bit and asking us if we can get one added this year, so.
Are there additional HOAs that are vast? You said two at the top of the list, but are there like a five, ten more, or? I'm curious about kind of demand from HOAs.
Yeah, um, I think there's others that we have on our planning map where we've identified, you know, a gap in the system where it'd be beneficial to have a, a hub location, but we haven't had conversations with all the HOAs in the area that could be potential hubs hosts.
And some of the expansion this year was at the request, for example, of Warriors Mark. So, we have implemented some hubs based on interest already this year, and then what Teddy's talking about is an expansion potential next year.
Yeah, and I think I'm just trying to get at, like, it sounds like there's at least two that are seriously interested, and if there was more, just to kinda, as we look at growing the system, I think it's great. Yeah, nice work.
How'd the mountain bike version work going through Warriors Mark?
Whoa.
Going through the projects.
Maybe you said this and I missed it, but did you mention, are these HOAs of kind of workforce? Or are they more visitors, or do you not have a understanding of that?
You know, I haven't got a breakout of, you know, the, the ones that we're in talk, have been talking to are not, uh, you know, purpose-built deed-restricted housing, but there are, there are ones where there's probably some deed restrictions that have gone into them through the buy-down program or housing helps. So, there's probably some percentage of units that are actually deed-restricted. I just don't know exactly how many yet.
Just reading through the climate summit for Breck twenty-five, and there's like a ton of stuff up at Alpen Rock, which could be a bit of a challenge to get up to. And so, I know Alpen Rock like doesn't have any extra space up there, but it'd be cool if we could get something up there.
Yeah, we have a solution.
Yeah, we're, we're going to put a temporary hub up there for the conference. So, there for Mountain Towns twenty-thirty, we will have a special event hub that we have up there for the event. We're still working with the hotel to identify where exactly it will go. It is, it is definitely tight, but we're, we're committed to finding a space.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Wait, steps ahead, many, many steps. Okay, anything else?
I thought that the information about the trip start to trip ends was very interesting, and for the most part, nobody's leaving an empty hub. It looks like the bikes are coming and going in pretty equal proportions. The biggest difference was probably on PK.
Yeah, and that's pretty common in bike share. Hub that's located on top of a hill, people like to ride downhill and less so going back up.
Free bikes, though, they oughta wanna ride back up.
But yeah, we do, we share that info with our operations team. We have hubs that are drain bikes, so more trip starts than trip ends. So, it ends up empty, and then we also have ones that pool where there's more people that ride to that hub than ride away from it. So, they kinda bunch up there, and so the operations team is using that data to help be efficient and how they plan their routes and rebalancing the bikes.
Guys do a good job of bal- rebalancing when needed. I, it's rare you see an empty hub anymore. That first year you would, and you don't, it's great.
Good.
Great. Anything else? Thank you both very much.
Hey, back home projects, could we do a site visit at some point on the skate park? I think it'd be fun to kinda see it evolve and.
Do you wanna do it before it's done or after it's finished?
Either one, whatever staff recommends, but at some point.
We can talk about that.
People are skating on it today.
Yeah, Jay wanted to bring you a skateboard.
Yeah, right. All right, housing, Lori.
Um, yeah, we did have a meeting today, so you'll see those minutes in your packet in two weeks. Uh, but in your packet for today were some minutes from our June twenty-fourth meeting, and I didn't know if anybody had any questions, but I thought it would come down just in case.
Thank you, any questions?
Yes, I have one question, Lori, can you expand a little bit on the transfer of deed restriction? What that situation was about? It was where Work Root was in support of the requested transfer of the deed restriction?
Yeah, I'm trying to think which one this is. I think, um, we're gonna have to get back to you, cause we've done a few transfers recently, and I don't remember which one we talked to the committee. Two, um, we've had a lot of conversations about specific deed restrictions and moving them around or doing some other things with our deed restrictions, and I don't remember which one we talked about two weeks ago. Do you?
Three, three seventeen North French?
Yeah, it looks like it was on French, and they were gonna move it to potentially a French Creek unit. By the way, which French Creek unit? But we felt that it was more valuable to us in French Creek, since it's a neighborhood we're trying to get deed restrictions on.
So, there.
Yeah, there's.
Do these often? I guess I'm not familiar with.
At the most, two a year.
Okay.
And we don't do them a lot, but occasionally somebody will come in and for one reason or another, they want to move their deed restriction around. So, we look at the property where the current deed restriction is and the level of the restriction, and we look at the place where they want to put it, and it's really sort of a judgment call whether it's a, a win for us. We wanna make sure that we're getting a unit that's at least as good as what we had, or in a better location that better serves our workforce, so.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
So, in a situation like this where it moved out of town, was it that it would be more affordable? Was that what one?
No, typically, some of the ones that are in town are, you know, smaller units or in a much older deed restriction perhaps, uh, in the historic district.
Okay.
And if we have the opportunity to move it to like a full house, a lot of the ones that we'll get in town are some of the older condos, sometimes on French Street, I don't really remember where this one was, but.
I think it's a single unit.
Yeah.
It was like a small.
It was very small.
Yeah, a little, odd little.
And to go to a house in French Creek is a win for us.
This one I remember being clearly a win, some of them are more judgment.
Some are tougher decisions.
Lori, do you have the, like, do you have the freedom of moving funds between buy-downs and housing helps as you deem necessary? So, you don't need any direction on our part to make, to make sure that it is going back and forth the way it needs to, to be most effective for the housing department?
No, I think it would show up in our budget that we've utilized, fully utilized the funds in one account. And then we are going to be utilizing the funds in another account, but we can use them. We've heard from you loud and clear, we can use those, that buy-down account to fund housing helps.
Which is the direction the market's taking us now, is, uh, less buy-downs, more housing helps. We're, housing.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Take is exploding, great.
Still going full on, um, and lots of people using it for down payment assistance to get into a unit. A few people still using it as the current owners, but yeah, it's great.
Anything else on housing? Thank you, Lori. All right, there was nothing in open space and committee reports was social equity? All right, let's move into legislative updates.
Okay, that is me. You have a memo in your packet. Uh, in order to not get sort of sitting here giving you legal advice in public, I, I created the, the memo for this, just sort of describing what each piece of legislation that, and breaking it into categories of, you know, things that are affecting town code, things affecting law enforcement, things affecting internal operations, and things that are, that sort of have a broader statewide effect. So, I can run through those pretty briefly, and if you have factual questions about them, I'm happy to answer them. If we wanna get into a conversation about sort of what this means for us and what we might do, then I would recommend that we either schedule a future executive session or have a one-on-one conversation about it. Does that sound good to everybody? Right, okay. So, uh, the first category that I have here is just measures affecting the town code. These are things that will likely require modifications to the town code, including a measure regarding turf requirements for residential development. That sort of is a multi-phased and faceted bill that separates multifamily development from single-family residential development, but both types have certain restrictions on the use of both artificial and right, and natural turf as landscaping options. So, that'll be kind of an interesting one that I'm sure will come back to you with some planning changes to the development code. The other one, the sort of big one that everyone was talking about is House Bill twenty-five-ten-fifty-six regarding local government permitting of wireless telecommunications facilities. So, this went back and forth a lot in the, in the legislature and imposes some new limitations on local governments permitting of wireless facilities. So, some additional shot clocks and some additional parameters around what we can and can't require of applicants for those types of facilities. So, that one will also be coming back to you with some changes to the code. House Bill twenty-five-ten-thirty regarding accessibility standards in the building code. That one's fairly minor. Senate Bill twenty-five-thirty-three regarding liquor licensing for drugstores. Essentially, that just says that, uh, if you have drugstore licenses, which we don't, so this is sort of inapplicable to us, but interesting nonetheless. If you have, uh, drugstore liquor licenses, you, those can continue, but you can't issue any new ones. So, you have to change your liquor code. So, we might have to change our code, even though we don't actually currently have any drugstore liquor licenses. House Bill twenty-five-eleven-twelve regarding the ability of law enforcement to enforce state vehicle registration requirements. It's fairly straightforward. House Bill twenty-five-ten-zero-one regarding the ability of local governments to enforce wage laws. That's a whole other conversation. House Bill twenty-five-ten-twenty-nine, which authorizes the extension of town jurisdiction on open space located outside the town boundaries. That's a pretty interesting one and something that I think we'll also come back with between open space and planning to talk about. So, measures affecting town operations, there's a small number of new laws that will affect internal operations of the town, mostly in the realm of finance and HR. These measures include House Bill twenty-five-thirteen-hundred, which is regarding workers' comp claims. So, we used to be able to provide a small list of, of physicians for workers' comp, and now we have to refer employees who are making workers' comp claims to the entire list of physicians in the state that are capable of taking their claim. I'm not sure, I don't, I won't opine on the relative advisability of some of these. Senate Bill twenty-five-one-forty-four regarding additional leave for parents when their child is receiving inpatient neonatal, neonatal intensive care. House Bill twenty-five-ten-seventeen regarding unclaimed utility deposits. So, that might require, that also might require a change in town code, as well as House Bill twenty-five-twelve-twenty-four regarding municipal compliance with the Unclaimed Property Act. Previously, we were exempt from the Unclaimed Property Act, and now we will need to comply with that. Senate Bill twenty-five-forty-six regarding tax audit confidentiality, and House Bill twenty-five-ten-seventeen requiring compliance with the state's Comprehensive Community Integration Plan for Individuals with Disabilities. The requirements for the town on that one don't really come into play until the state actually goes through and does their part of that. They have to create a whole community integration plan, so I think there's a lot more to come on that. In addition, there are several changes to housing laws related to landlord-tenant relationships, excuse me, and affecting the management and funding of housing projects, and so the Housing Division and I will be looking at those more as well to see how they affect our rental projects in particular. So, there was a lot of action in the legislature regarding municipal court, open records, and elections. Not all of it passed or was signed into law by the governor. But, uh, I think it's clear that there's sort of the headlights or whatever the beam. the headlights or whatever the beam is on municipal courts and court clerks. So that's going to be interesting over the next couple of years to see. There's a real desire to see, at the state level, to see parity between municipal courts and county and district courts. So there's a lot to consider in that conversation and something that we can talk about more, but and that we need to talk internally about as well. But overall, nothing extremely significant was passed this time, but there, there was an effort to, to seriously change the way municipal courts sentence crimes. So the, there were some minor changes. Senate Bill twenty-five sixty-two, which prohibited municipal court criminal charges for failure to appear. Senate Bill twenty-five oh one, which expanded the Federal Voting Rights Act. This was a significant statewide bill that prohibits voter suppression and discrimination and then also requires multilingual ballots for certain jurisdictions that meet the requirements that are in that statute. We are not in that. Our jurisdiction does not meet those requirements, but interesting nonetheless. House Bill twenty-five twelve twenty-five, which also prohibits anyone from intimidating someone else in an election context. So these are kind of interesting because they also could be the basis for municipal or district court criminal charges. So measures affecting law enforcement. There were some additional measures, I think, as you all are probably aware, over the last few years, the state of Colorado has done a lot in terms of law enforcement accountability. So there were some additional measures in that vein that were passed into law, including House Bill twenty-five ten thirty-one regarding protection for law enforcement whistleblowers. So that's essentially if you have someone in your law enforcement agency that is essentially blowing the whistle on somebody else within the agency who's violating the law with regards to civil rights. There's new protections for the whistleblower. House Bill twenty-five eleven thirty-six, which helps actually clarify a lot regarding how post stores and makes available information regarding peace officer conduct. So post right now is required to maintain all of this information regarding peace officers and their various conduct in different contexts and this, this law allows the peace officer to appeal if something's been in, you know, posted to, to post that is not accurate or doesn't tell the whole story. So that gives them some additional avenues to ensure that their career isn't affected adversely by something that isn't correct. And then there were a number of changes to the state criminal code that, you know, aren't that germane to us, but for our law enforcement, for PD, they may, they'll be interested in some of that. Measures of general interest. So these are, you know, will likely have a generalized impact to the state as a whole. These laws include House Bill twenty-five twelve thirty-nine, which modified the Colorado Anti-Discrimination Act to allow for additional damages for violations of the law and then clarifying certain discriminatory practices. House Bill twenty-five thirteen twelve, which increased protections for transgender individuals. Senate Bill twenty-five two seventy-six, which created numerous new protections to avoid violating the rights of individuals based on their immigration status. And in particular with regards to the sharing of immigration-related information. House Bill twenty-five twelve eleven, which regulates the manner in which special districts calculate tap fees and how and when they determine to provide service. There are several measures regarding the funding for and availability of clean energy, including House Bill twenty-five ten forty, which clarifies that nuclear energy is considered to be clean energy for purposes of the twenty-fifty clean energy target deadline that the state is on. House Bill twenty-five twelve forty-seven, which allows a county subject to Tabor to implement a lodging tax up to six percent and expands the permitted use of that lodging tax. I'll just note that I think you guys are all aware of this, but that, the adoption of that tax doesn't affect municipality that already has a lodging tax. So any municipality that has their own lodging tax is not affected by a county that wants to take advantage of the new authorization to send a lodging tax to the voters. And then some other measures intending to increase the efficiency of certain state agencies, including CDOT and the Office of the State Engineer. And then finally, there, again, I know we're all aware that there was a significant budget shortfall at the state level and the legislature passed numerous measures, measures moving funding from certain programs that are discretionary spending programs. And some of those programs will affect things that the town is eligible to, to apply for different grant programs. So there's some housing money that's being moved around. There's some marijuana tax money that's being moved around. So it'll be interesting to see how that sort of plays out. And that's kind of it. Anything, any questions?
Keely, on the, on the house bills that that have to, that affect our town code or necessitate a change of our town code, how long do we have to get that done?
There's various requirements, but none of them are immediate. Yeah, they, it depends on the bill, the specific bill. Some of them are like first of the year, some of them are, you know, next summer. Some of them are in two years. I think the turf bill is, I don't know, like twenty twenty-eight or something. It's some, it just varies by the bill. Yeah.
Any other questions? I'm assuming since you didn't schedule an executive session for today, that the answer to this is no, but do you suggest that we meet, have an executive session on any of these?
Not right this second. So I think, you know, we as staff need to go through it all and everybody needs to, to all the different departments need to take a look at the measures that are affecting their specific operations. And then, you know, come back to you if we have specific things that, that need council direction on. So some, you know, some of this is going to be mandatory changes to town code. And then there's some other discussions that I think, you know, we may want to have an executive session or we may want to have openly. It just depends on the, the topic and what, what the consequences are, I guess, of our action or not taking action.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you, Keely.
Yeah.
A lot of information and I liked how you synthesized it. All right, moving on to planning matters, we're going to do the Breck Montessori school building update.
Hello. All right, John's here with me.
Well, support.
We like that.
But I'm here to give a quick update on the Montessori building. So this building was built in eighteen ninety-nine and has the original timber foundation. So over the past year, we've found that the differential settling in the foundation is causing cracking in the drywall. Some of the windows are inoperable. All the marbles run to one corner of the building.
Thank you.
So we hired a structural engineer to evaluate the foundation and they deemed the building safe for school operations for the short term. They did note that the town could make some improvements in the structure. And so we've done that. Our facilities division has gone in and added some structural components in the crawl space. So we hired the architecture firm of EUA to come in and evaluate options for us, as, as you've seen multiple times. But because the building is located in the historic district, we're limited to what types of modifications can be made. So you can see those limits in the memo. But we keep evaluating options and we're here today to just talk to you about some of the options that we've looked at, get your thoughts and your advice going forward. You know, as staff, we don't feel like any of the options are great, but we want to hear your feedback. Some of the options that we've looked at include fixing the foundation by lifting the building or opening the floors and pouring in a crawl space. And that would fix the structural problems, but it doesn't give us any storage space. Mechanical still stays in the attic. That's another huge thing with this building is the hot water heater is in the attic. And we're just concerned that at some point, if it fell through, that would be a disaster. Another option would be fixing the foundation by lifting the building, pouring a full basement. And, and at that point, you could put storage and all the mechanical systems in the basement and then you'd have to reattach that historic part to that basement. So we've also looked at adding to the rec center. A possible location for that addition would be on the northeast corner, which would be by the rec path and the river. In this scenario, we could build a classroom that has an exterior entrance. You'd have to walk around from the parking lot to the east side of the building. That would have the same capacity as the current school. We'd have to look at rec path realignments, a possible new bridge. So there's just some complications there. So in addition to those three that are presented, just wanted to let you know, we looked at a bunch of other options, including two classrooms at the rec center, moving the current building closer to Main Street. So we could do an additional classroom on the back with an apartment underneath or storage underneath. But it, it does present some problems by moving that building. So just here to give you an update and here if you have any strong feelings either way on any of these options and if you'd like us to proceed in any certain direction.
Great. Okay, so we'll go with questions first and then we also have the questions of, do we prefer any of the options presented? Would staff or would council like staff to continue evaluating any other options? And kind of any other ideas? So any questions about any of the options as presented?
I was curious about, you mentioned on there about having two classrooms added to the rec center. Tell me more about that.
Yeah, so when we began this project, one of the goals was to expand capacity because we're always looking at childcare classrooms and we've had meetings with ECO and all of the childcare directors and we thought, well, if we could add capacity as part of this project, that would be like a secondary goal in addition to fixing the foundation. So we did have an option to put in two classrooms on the east side of the rec center. I didn't present it here because I wanted to kind of have apples to apples with the same capacity, but it is an option. Obviously it would cost more. But yes, it is an option.
Great, thank you.
Remind me, I, did Montessori, do they do infants? No.
They do not. They're, they're licensed from two and a half to six years old.
So our age group where we have the longest waiting list, they don't serve. Is that accurate? Okay. What did we originally pay for this building? Do you remember?
I think it was about one point two million.
How many square feet?
I think the total is about seventeen hundred, but that includes all of the additions. The front part of the building, the historic part, I think is about eleven or twelve hundred.
Okay.
And it has a second floor, but because it's not five feet tall.
Yeah.
It doesn't count to, it's not usable and doesn't count towards the square footage.
Kids fit fine.
Yeah. If we moved classrooms to the rec center, what happens to the building? The existing building?
So there are multiple things that could happen to the existing building. We could fix the foundation or we could sell it or whatever. We choose.
When you talk about moving the mechanic, mechanical room from the attic to the basement, obviously, one of the benefits is that it has, it doesn't fall. It, it, you know, it stays where it's at. Is that a true threat right now? And is that the recommendation of staff is if we were to stay in the current location, that the mechanical room be shifted?
Yeah, our facilities division is really concerned about the hot water heater up in the attic. We have had some problems with the mechanical systems in the past year. They had to get a forklift to lift it up and put it in the attic. We, we just got a new one because the old one was having problems. So the hot water heater is one or two years old, I forget at this point. But we've also had some shifting with the gas line. And so we had a gas leak at the school last year where we had to suspend school operations until we could get the gas line fixed just because the foundation had shifted, which caused the gas line to crack.
And it's best practices not to have hot water heaters in the attic.
Correct. Yeah.
Any other questions? John, I'm interested in understanding what you think about having an entire another programming set at the rec center. I just, spending time here in the summer, it feels like we are like bursting at the seams and I'm just like I have a hard time imagining adding a childcare center that's operating to that. Do you see that as kind of a difficulty or do you think that's not a big deal?
Well, Breck Montessori's curriculum and program kind of offsets a lot of what the rec center does because they follow the school district. They have a little bit more abbreviated hours. Adding any additional programming is going to increase the amount of parking problems that you guys saw this spring. But it, it's definitely doable, just based on offsetting the times, you know, when after school kids come in. Those, those children will not be there. So I, I don't foresee big red flags with coexisting with that. And they would be treated like a, like a tenant. You know, a partner tenant, but it's not something that the rec department would run. We, we are not experts on Montessori childcare. They would be using the space within, within our building and it would be a separate entrance and there would be some, you know, partnerships that we could do with it, but same things that we would do with Timberline and Carriage House. And Little Red as well.
And would you say that this location that's being considered for Montessori is sort of the last? I mean, this might be hard for you to say because this probably hasn't been analyzed, but I guess I'm just considering the rec center can't expand in many directions at this point. And so this seems like it would, if there was an expansion, this would be one of maybe two places that it could probably expand in a meaningful way.
Yeah, I mean, that's the direction that we can go. You know, the roof line behind the pool creates a lot of problems. That's another option. You know, the, the front side of the building is, is pretty, pretty taken care of already. So I think the backside, you know, as we looked at all the different areas, that this would make the most sense. You know, the drawings that you see in there can definitely be engineered a little bit better if that was the direction that council gave. We would create a better entrance closer to the building for, for those children.
Yeah, it's not really that. I guess I'm just thinking this really pins in the rec center and that's what I'm really concerned about is like it takes away kind of the rec center's ability to do much in the future as needs continue to increase and change. And I guess that's a concern of mine in, at putting an entire another tenant at the rec.
Yeah, I, I share your concern. I also see it as a multi-use space that could be used for something different in the future. An additional, you know, it's going to be a kid programming space, but doesn't necessarily always have to be Breck Montessori kid programming, if that makes sense.
Then we have to find another place for them. I mean, they don't, they are off for like a month in the summer, but it's like mostly it would be Breck, I guess. And then you're saying after school, there would be some time too. Okay.
Okay.
Could it be shared use, like you just kind of described where it's Montessori during the day and then when they're done, that then if there's extra programming where you need space that could figure out that arrangement?
It, it can be, but that gets complicated with licensing. It needs to be vacate premises. Time in between new people start through, but it would be built. This would be Breck Montessori's home. Yep. Absolutely, first and foremost.
They have a lot of like specialized toys and tools and expensive stuff for Montessori stuff that I'm just not sure, like, you know, because the rec center just has completely different programming in there. I don't know if it would, it sounds nice in theory. I just don't know if it would work in reality.
That's fair. Thank you.
Do you have a question or comment?
I mean, I, I share all of the concerns you've already said about the rec center and then just also the, the traffic with the bike path there. I know you said we'd move the bike path, but like that stretch of the bike path is already congested, busy, even, even a handful of people, like a dog on a leash, two bikes and, and two joggers is like kind of bananas back there. So I'm just worried about, yeah, kids and all sorts of added traffic through that stretch.
The one thing on the rec path, and I don't, I mean, we may at some point want to do this anyway, is it probably would improve the condition because you wouldn't have that T intersection that messes everyone up by the skate park.
So where would it move, I guess, is the question.
If you could, if you. Yeah, if you could imagine where the art bridge, I mean, Shannon. Shannon, I might just, oh, sorry, go. Yeah, disagree with this, but where the art bridge is currently, you could just divert right there. You could also take it on the other side of the Blue River and and bring it back before you get to Coin or sorry Valley Brook. But there there are options there, sorry.
Yep, no, that was perfect.
But regard, yeah, I guess regardless of whether Montessori goes there or not, with the way summer camp operations go right now. We would like to look at a future option for that rec path, you know, down the road. Totally separate of this. Yeah.
All right, so it sounds like staff has, would like us to definitely consider the mechanical situation of the building. If we move forward with that and then lots to consider, I think, at the rec center as well. Does anyone have an option that they'd like to put forth as their favorite option or that they see as making most sense? Jay?
Sure. First off, I just want to say thank you for stating those other options on there of just items that you guys vetted. But that we didn't, we wouldn't normally see. I think it is super helpful to to see the thought process and say, hey, we did think of this. We did think of this. We thought of this. And if there are strong of going, oh, hey, this sounds really good. Can you expand on why it's not one of the options? We can, we can ask those questions, but to get a glimpse into the thought process is super huge and really, really appreciate it. As far as the the options laid out, you know, I think we we sometimes get into this mentality that anytime we do anything, it has to be bigger, more people, you know, larger, more capacity. And in this case, I I don't believe that that's the best option. I think the Montessori school where it is serves a really important function of being in downtown Breck. Providing the vibrancy of, you know, in in town Montessori school. And that, you know, I I was waffling between keeping it where it is and fixing the foundation or moving the mechanical room as stated in option C. And after seeing staff's recommendation, I would be a strong option C preference. That being said, I would love to encourage staff to keep eyes open for any other layups that come up that seem like that come on the market or that are proposed that may be a better fit. But as far as making a concerted effort to give them a permanent home. I think fixing the foundation, moving the mechanical room makes the most financial and logistical sense.
Does anyone have a different option that they want us to consider some points about?
I'll throw up a different concept. Looking at option A, one of the things I think about is I love and then spending a bunch of time at the rec center rehab my knee. It's fascinating and I really enjoy the energy that you get by having kid pickup and folks doing physical therapy and getting a workout in. So to me, it's like this communal space where our community gets together. So from that angle, I really like the investment in having just another subset of our community. That's, you know, getting to hang out in the parking lot, looking for a parking spot. And all the challenges that come with that. So, yeah, there's a lot of, I think, value in in having that connectivity in our community. I do understand it's more expensive. Kind of like the idea of exploring two rooms there just because it's such a well-used space. And, you know, clearly the 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 programming that you've put together for, you know, after school care and during the summer is has been so successful. It's like, yeah, I've got extra space there that if Montessori moves down the road, sorry, Kelly. I I like having that space there and really think there's been success there. So investing in the rec center to me seems appealing. Actually, all the options seem good, right? Like investing in this in one one form or the other is good. I could see spending a little extra to do the rec center.
Okay.
It's additional points. I'm I'm with Jay, but I've got a couple. And I appreciate what you're saying, Todd. I, I mean, we've just seen so much success in in the rec center with after school and summer camps. And credit to the staff, huge credit to the staff. That's where I would rather see us expand because that's a huge need area as well to support our local families. So I I would hate to take away potential expansion of those programs that are already so successful by taking away that area back there and and that. So for that reason, I I probably would steer away from that one. I also don't want to invest in expanding something that doesn't attack our waiting list. You know, I think we've identified the primary, the majority of the waiting list is that infant room. Because it's so difficult, you know, with the with the ratios, with the teacher ratios and stuff. It's hard. So I'd rather save that investment to try to to do better with the infants. I like C because, you know, for all the reasons Jay stated, I won't restate them. But also because I think if if we ever did find a better home for Montessori, I think it makes the building most marketable to sell.
Just for clarity, would that second, the additional classroom would be for the younger age group, right?
That's what we propose for Breck Montessori, that the toddler, so eighteen to thirty-six months, which the latest studies from ECO is that is the number one desired or biggest waitlist.
Oh, it is. Okay, I thought.
Versus the infant.
So it's.
They're about equal.
They close. And younger is the biggest need.
Man, I think I'm still a C, but that's good to know.
Anybody else?
I think everyone said it well. I'm option C too. I'd support an intentional rec center expansion if you decide that needs to be done to support existing programs. And I think the you'd have a lot of support for the bike path too.
Yeah, it makes the whole sense of world move that bike path.
Yeah. I am also an option C.
Option C, I think financially it's the best bang for the buck. With the additional space at the rec center. Maybe not necessarily for this, but for something else. But I think if we were to go forward with option C, we'd have a marketable structure for the future as opposed to just making it work for what it is. So the best investment.
Great.
Yeah, I think Dick really laid that out thoughtfully, right? Of extra space for expansion for the programming that's that's in aligned with what we're already doing. And then the marketable building, I think I'm I'm over to option C, given that. So thank you for sharing that.
Great. What else do you need from us?
I think that is it. Let me just check the questions. Yeah. That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
So much for all the work. And I echo the comments about the rec center, just crushing it again this summer.
Thank you. That feedback will be passed on.
And you make it look so fun.
Yeah, it's fun. All right. So next up, we have the BGV parcel three site plan modification de novo, hearing procedural questions only. Which means this is a good time to ask your questions about how we're doing things tonight, but not to ask questions about the project.
Sarah, can you just run through the order for us where refresher staff presents, applicant presents?
Yeah, so I'll give a presentation. The applicant will have an opportunity to give a presentation. You'll be able to ask questions of me and then questions of the applicant. There'll be an opportunity for public comment and then your final comments.
Can we ask questions after the public comment? Not of the person commenting, but of staff or the applicant.
Yeah, that final discussion period. Okay.
See you all tonight.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, since we're a little ahead of schedule, I would suggest that we go into our reports. Are people ready to do that? Feel confident and excited to give an update on report of the, well, we'll go with the mayor first, or I mean, the, oh, I guess you're done. Do you have more?
I do have more.
Report of town manager. Let's go back up to the agenda at the top. Report to town manager and staff, Shannon.
So just a couple of things. I think Peyton has reached out to you about the Mountain Dreamers fundraiser. And we do have a table for that. So if you have not responded to her and you're interesting, interested in going, please let her know. She did, I'm sure, send me the information just somewhere in my email. So if you need that, let me know and I'll get it for you. And then just an update on the public lands letter that we had talked about at the last meeting. There was very shortly after that, a lot of change in that proposal in the federal bill. And so it initially, the US Forest or, well, the whole thing got pulled out because a parliamentarian said that it it wasn't proper to have it in there. The senator who had included it had planned to put something else in a modified version. And then basically said he wasn't putting it in at all. And so we did not end up crafting a letter since it seemed at that point to be moot. But Julia did craft a thank you letter to or thank you card to Jeff Hurd, who was in the House and voted against it or that portion, voted against that portion of the bill. And then we also did one to Representative Goose. He's always doing that good work for us. I think I had emailed you all already, but just a reminder that we had to postpone the incident command, emergency management training that we had planned for the twenty-second. So as soon as we can get that back on the schedule, we'll let you know. And then just a little bit of interesting information or, I don't know, I think you'll think it's interesting or you'll be happy with it. But we are planning to post the chief's position next week. So expect to see that out there and we're really excited to see what we have for applications. And I think that's it, unless you have any questions for me.
Okay, thanks, Shannon. Cast MMC. I mean, we did have cast as part of CML. Really?
Yeah, and we, yeah, and we did an update.
Next week.
On MMC for the last one, we have MMC on Thursday and there's a cast meeting in SS Park in August.
All right, that's my update. Thanks, Shannon.
Sure.
Open space, Jay?
Uh, we have a meeting on the twenty-first.
Rec tourism office?
We have a meeting, I think, the twenty-fourth, yes.
Rec history?
Tomorrow.
Rec creative arts?
Have a meeting on Thursday with Tamara and Martin, just to kind of get ahead of things. And then the next meeting is late in this month.
And a fundraiser on Thursday night. Which is a really cool one if people, I don't know if there's still tickets, so maybe I shouldn't. It's fun. Outside in the, oh, maybe I'll just mention it now. So that is in the Arts Square. So the free music that we usually enjoy while the farmer's market is going on, I think will be replaced by that fundraiser. They still have music, so you'll probably be able to hear it. And the farmer's market is taking place on Thursday night at the exchange lot where it always is. So we can still, hopefully all the vendors will make it this week.
Kelly, back to BTO.
Yeah.
We did not have a meeting. It's coming up. But we, Lucy did hold last Thursday a meeting of the mind. She called it basically a brainstorming session. It was primarily with the lodging community. I went just to try to talk about new ideas, fresh ideas, new angles. You know, how to, how to offset some of the shortfall in in lodging reservations that the data is indicating. It was moderately attended and and moderately engaging. So she's expanded it and this Thursday, and Jay was going to ask you if you could go, I've got me out of town to restaurants and retail people. And it's going to be at Fatty's this Thursday at nine AM. And I I think the format was outstanding, you know. You know, dumb Bill will give some data and then Lucy will facilitate discussion of of business owners and or managers or or whomever really to brainstorm my ideas. So wanted to put, throw that out there.
It's great. We'll be there as well, Dick.
Awesome.
It's great that that's happening.
Matt Bowler said he would go. He's president of the BTO, so that's good and restaurant guy. But it'd be nice if we had a council person, I think, if possible.
I think if you can't go, I can go. All right, thank you for that. CML advisory update, pre thoroughly covered most of what's going on. Uh, social equity. We have that, but we should say. Back on the board and she's the secretary. Yes, yes. And she had to be booted and she got a lot of votes, so of course, very deserving.
Sorry, thank you. Probably we'll have a retreat, but otherwise we don't really meet except right ahead of and during the legislative session. So we can probably scratch that off the list for a couple of months.
Until January. Okay, sounds great.
Um, otherwise, social equity, the minutes were in our packet. I'll call out that we talked about having a kind of government one-on-one, one-on-one type training. But that's something May and Helen and the clerks team has already been working on. And I think that'll just be an incredible education tool for our community at large. So I think that's great that you're doing that, May. Thank you. And our next meeting is in next Wednesday, where the Social Equity Commission will be talking about housing and some elements of the runway project that we haven't yet decided on. So that'll be hopefully a robust discussion and that'll help us gain some insight from this committee. Because a lot of those folks have different networks, different experiences. So I'm really looking forward to the the insight they'll bring to that conversation. And that's it for social equity.
Sounds great. Thank you for keeping us updated on. Arts and Cultural Master Plan Steering Committee?
I actually have quite a bit to report.
We have time.
Dylan and I had a meeting with the Steering Committee and the Corona Insights today, actually. And they presented the initial survey feedback and survey results. Just some of the stats was that we had seven hundred and ninety-two respondents. We're hoping for anything greater than three hundred. So this was, it's statistically significant. We've got, we've got a good breakdown of about three hundred full-time residents, two hundred and fifty part-time residents and about two hundred visitors. So really good, good slicing as far as that goes. These were done through unique links to for emails. Then their postcards sent out to renters and and people that didn't respond to the email. So we were able to get that. They they were very adamant in that this was draft results and that it is not finalized. We don't really think there's maybe material change, so some of this may change a little bit. But again, based on some of the, some of the things I thought was interesting is that, you know, the the questionnaire, as you guys saw, asked, you know, how do you see Breckenridge? And number one was a ski town, number two was historic town. And kind of a distant third was a welcoming town. And so, you know, that having it be a welcoming town, being a little bit lower on there, having it be an arts town, almost non-existent, was interesting feedback to to be using, moving forward. I think the biggest, one of the biggest gaps between what the desire was and what the. I think the biggest, one of the biggest gaps between what the desire was and what the uh, reality is for people was connecting with community and connecting with others. And that was shown mostly with that second homeowner, part-time resident uh, demographic. So it's, it's something that we know about that that second homeowner, that part-time resident uh, still kind of feels a little bit disconnected from our community. Um, I did think that it was interesting that the satisfaction rate of the arts community, um, seventy-eight percent uh, responded with at least somewhat satisfied or or better. Um, so that was, that was a good uh, number to hear. Um, seventy-five percent of all respondents had visited the arts district in the past year. And I thought that was a, a good sign. Um, interestingly enough, they, they broke down all the different uh, facilities. Uh, Old Masonic Hall was the least visited out of all the different areas. So I thought that was just good food for thought. Um, and then ninety percent rated the Riverwalks uh, as good or better. Um, in, in good condition or better or excellent.
Ninety percent.
Ninety percent. So I just thought that was very material in, in our discussions of where CIP money goes. So yeah, th- those were the takeaways that I really took out. Um, I did have a question for council and the fact that uh, we're getting ready for our focus groups in early August. And you know, the, the the groups have been identified first off and foremost is like the Hispanic speak or the Spanish speaking population. Um, you know, getting ambassadors from FERC, Mountain Dreamers to be in a focus group that is uh, facilitated in Spanish. Um, having a lodging group, um, and you know, because they're able to see the front end and the back end of the arts uh, events. And then kind of a, a younger demographic business owner, um, handpicked kind of group that we can find. Not, not you, Dick, I'm sorry. Um, curious if there are any other segments of our, of our, I guess of our community that you guys would like to see a focus group for uh, for this arts and culture uh, survey and kind of digging deeper on some of the questions.
I'd say workforce, you know, something outside of business owners, managers, just, just younger workforce, ski bumps, whatever. You know, that the kind of that really, in my mind, is the light blood that keeps this town going. You know, and I'd love to hear what their thoughts are.
We did talk about that.
Get them sometime, but that would be great if we.
Offer free pizza and we can get them.
Exactly what we should do. You're right.
That was uh, did talk about that.
Jay, what about a second homeowners group? Since that's one that seems a little bit disconnected. You could maybe go to the various HOA administrators. And I know at least in my HOA, we have at least one second homeowners who's on our board and might be an advocate for what's going on with all second homeowners. But if we're really interested in engaging them, want to bring them to the table.
And uh, so out of the six focus groups we're doing, three of them are gonna be in person, three will be virtual. We identified the, one of the virtuous as being a great one for our part-time residents because it's, they don't have to physically be here for those. I think that's a great point.
Are all the focus groups gonna be in early August or would there be an opportunity to have some? I'm just thinking like, one way to get kind of that younger workforce group is go to CMC for a day and talk to like a number of different classes because they would be super engaged. I mean, it would be a nice way to spend a class. But class isn't back in session until almost September. So we'd have to do, and maybe they could do it virtually at that point or something, but I mean, I think those folks, I think it would be a missed opportunity not to get some younger people involved in this discussion because otherwise we're just we're not building it for the future, it feels like.
No, I think that's a great point. And I know that uh, we're targeting early August most most pressing to be able to capture some of the arts uh, partner organizations that have their constituents in town at that point. Um, but I believe it is going through. Do we have an end date for those?
Um, yeah, I think it would be then uh, you know, definitely wrapped up by August is the final report. Um, but don't forget, this is a preliminary piece to the entrance of the cultural master, master plan. So we'll be talking to a huge amount of stakeholders during the cultural master planning process that this focus group effort is really just to dive deeper into what we didn't find out in the survey results.
Okay.
And the cultural master plan will involve a ton of people.
So we could have that part.
Yeah, definitely.
Great. Sounds good. Are we gonna see all those survey results at some point?
Yes. So I'm trying to schedule that with um, our consultant. So we're, we would hope, depending on when their report is done. Be either in August or early September, we're hoping for.
Okay.
Julian and I were talking about perhaps uh, kind of putting it in one of our packets, the actual results. And then once the focus groups are wrapped up. The um, Corona Insights, we'll do a presentation and then we'll have it as like kind of a formal presentation to council. But try to get the, the certified results into a package just so you have the information. And then uh, once we conduct deeper in the focus groups, do a full presentation, if that works.
Great, because then we can think about some of the outcomes and talk to people about it before that. That'd be helpful. Alright. Um, anything I missed? Want to tell us anything about events? Oh, Jay has something.
Alright, one of the things that I missed um, was the, and I couldn't read my writing at first or as you're going, um, the, the last like uh, data point was um, when asked the primary uh, barrier to participating. Um, the lack of information was the number one reason. So I think that again, communication, right? Like kind of all goes back on communication.
I'll struggle there.
Anyway, events.
I, I just threw that one at her. She just didn't.
And we did not prepare an update for today because we're meeting tomorrow morning, but I thought we had pretty great turnout at the Cirque Mechanique performance on Friday.
I heard a lot of positive feedback.
Anecdotally, I've heard a lot of business people had said it kept people in town, but I need to reach out to some of the ones that reached out to me last year, so haven't caught them yet. But anecdotally, just talking to people generally. I don't know if anybody else has heard anything from the business.
I mean, I heard people loved it and went, you know, pe- people who wouldn't have gone back downtown in the evening, went back downtown in the evening for that. Um, and then I think probably, I can try to speak for all of us, but I think we've just gotten flooded with positive comments about the farmer's market. I mean, people just.
The what?
The farmer's market. People just love it.
Yeah. Agreed. Good, exciting. Anything else we can take care of now as part of this?
Anybody have any matters?
I had.
Good.
I had one.
Great.
So in our, you know, ever since I was on planning commission, we have kind of followed the same route. Where, you know, applications go to planning and then they go for permitting. And those applications tend to change, sometimes materially, sometimes not in between those two. And I, I would just love to have community development look at any possibilities or any options where the engineering portion can come before or concurrently with planning so that the planning commission actually sees the final product prior to it being approved. And uh, I just say it's one of the things that is um, is frustrating a- at times. And I know for the planning commission especially, where um, items are approved expecting them to look a certain way or be, you know, um, oriented a certain way. And then it gets changed through engineering and building and then, and there's no, there's no review on that. So it's not a matter.
Great point.
Any others? Hey. Alright, well, we'll see everyone back here at seven o'clock. Um, otherwise, meeting adjourned. Alright, the time is now seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the town council re- uh, regular meeting for Tuesday, July eighth to order. Can you hear me? Feel so far away. Um, we're gonna start with a roll call, please.
Marika Page.
Here.
Dick Carlton.
Here.
Steve Gerard.
Here.
Carol Sade.
Here.
Jay Beckerman.
President.
Todd Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Owens.
Here. Um, start with approval of the minutes, town council minutes for June twenty-fourth. Any changes? Alright, minutes stand. Approval of the agenda, Shannon.
No changes.
Okay. We're gonna move on to communications to council. These are non-agenda items only and you will have a three-minute time limit, please. Anyone who wants to, please state your name for the record and go ahead.
Tess, 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 Tess. Good evening. My name is Angela Bokey. I'm here regarding the Town of Breckenridge Noxious Weed Program. On June twenty-fourth, I spoke to this council regarding the upcoming herbicide spraying. On June twenty-fifth, the next day, two men arrived at my house in a Town of Breckenridge vehicle to confront me. They said my information regarding lack of signage last year was incorrect. I was told that both me and my neighbor's perception of how the herbicide had been applied, waving a hose back and forth was mistaken. They said the herbicide was and would be applied in a surgical fashion, nozzle to noxious weeds only in a very targeted manner. On June twenty-sixth, our ne- neighborhood was again doused with herbicide. I took a video. I was shocked to see only one person in the truck. They drove with one hand while applying a toxic chemical with the other. As in the past, application was a far cry from precise and targeted. In the video, you saw a sustained spraying on either side of our neighbor's driveway and beyond their right-of-way into their yard. My husband and I had walked our dog up there that morning and observed no noxious weeds in that area. The next day I inspected and all their clover was dead. Under Colorado state law, clover is not listed as a noxious weed. The following day, both our dog and our neighbor's dog had diarrhea. Council members, there are better ways to rid the town of noxious weeds. Why are herbicides your only go-to? The State of Colorado's Noxious Weed Act emphasizes using a combination of methods. It explicitly states not just herbicides. I was told by a Town of Breckenridge employee that they had to use herbicides to comply with the law. Not true. The person applying the herbicide said it was safe. These are forever chemicals. They leach into our groundwater. No matter what you've been told, they are not safe. The problem in countr- in contracting with the county is that this is a one-size-fits-all approach. For example, in our neighborhood, we either pick our weeds or most people hire gardeners. We don't need herbicides sprayed up and down our streets. The organization Non-Toxic Neighborhoods recognized that different areas within the city require different approaches to weed eradication. They offer safer and healthier alternative. Let's stop hitting the easy button, button and doing what's always been done. If herbicides truly worked, wouldn't the weeds be gone by now? Where possible, why aren't we paying people to pull the weeds to eradicate them for good? Why aren't we planning native ground cover to prevent weeds in the first place? Sustainability efforts made by the town feature prominently on the Town of Breckenridge website. Several of you ran for council based upon your stance regarding the environment. We elected you because of it. Take action now so you are prepared for next summer. You promised us green, now deliver. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. So just to clarify, um, the video that was referenced was shared with you today. It's also been shared with May. So it's a um, part of the public record. And just so you all know, we are going to be we are working now to look at other options for chemicals and we'll be also looking at other opportunities for how we address noxious weeds for next year.
Thank you. Alright, any other public comment? There's one more, Carol.
Uh, my name's Therese Broderick and I am here to shed some light on the dark sky's ordinance and how it's been impacting residents like me. I support the intent of this ordinance. Protecting the night sky is a beautiful goal, but how it's being enforced, well, that's another story. I only heard about this ordinance when I received a formal compliance letter. No heads up, no outreach, just a warning. We retrofitted the fixture in question fully under a roof, producing negligible upward light. And now I need a flashlight to get from my car to my front door. My eighty-year-old in-laws can't safely use our stairs and not because of their age, but because your idea of compliance made our walkways unsafe for them. Your compliance officers are willing, aren't willing to visit our homes at night and see the reality of the situation, but they will blindly enforce the rules. We live in a town with long winters, icy walkways and wildlife in our yards. Safe lighting isn't a luxury, it's a necessity. When I raised these concerns and the unexpected cost, I was simply told you've had seventeen years to prepare. Well, that's if you knew about it. The town also had seventeen years. Where was the education, the outreach, the partnerships with local organizations to ease the burden on locals? Even the International Dark Sky Association, who provides the credentialing, lists community outreach and education as foundational. That's not a side note. It, it, it's not a side note, it's a starting point. Other towns have done it right. I spoke with officials in Peonia, who you promote as an example on the website. Their approach is collaborative, not punitive. It allows for variances, appeals and hardship exemptions. They worked with the residents and not against them. That's what community-based implementation looks like. Now let's talk about cost. Our string lights were cited and the town's reasonable fix was to spend over five hundred dollars to replace little hats on bulbs at six dollars apiece. We offered a cheaper alternative and that was denied. Basic necessities are at an all-time high and it's your tone deaf suggestion to spend over five hundred dollars to cover light bulbs. This isn't just impractical, it's hypocritical, hypocritical. You're asking us to recycle working fixtures, recycle, but buy new ones and calling that sustainable. Meanwhile, you light up Main Street like a snow globe, telling residents to dim their own homes and that contradiction matters. And while we're told to be compliant by to July first, town-owned streetlights are still using outdated fixtures. So no, I'm not asking you to throw the ordinance out. I'm just asking for balance, compassion and common sense. Let's include safety and financial hardship, hardship exemptions, a grandfather clause for older homes and fixtures and exemptions for under-roof lighting with minimal impact. Because right now, you're asking residents to choose between safety, affordability and compliance. And that's not really a fair choice. Thank you.
Carol Rockney, Breckenridge. I'm not as well-prepared as these people. Oh my goodness, I'm not used to that. That's we always used to just come and kind of talk, but it's on the same subject. Uh, I'd like to get rid of the international layer. It's called the International Dark Sky. It's just another, another layer of bureaucracy that I don't think that we need. I would like to see the town itself do its own Breckenridge Dark Sky lighting. And do it by ordinances if you needed to, but give us the control, not have, we're, I thought we were a home a home control, what do they call that? A home.
Home rule.
Home rule town. And now we let some entity come above us to, to say, well, you gotta do this. And now we let some entity come above us to say, well, you gotta do this, and you gotta do that, you got seventeen years to do it, and, and, and ruin our whole little town? I was here when we really had dark sky, and no one came to come and look at the stars. We couldn't, they didn't even know where Breckenridge was. And, uh, so we've worked for many, many years to make it as cute and welcoming as possible. So, my mission, I guess, where I'm here for the summer, and we know we live here. I wish we could live here all the time, but because of the altitude and our old age, uh, it's hard. So, and Sigur got a stroke twenty years ago. We just couldn't handle it anymore, so we're in Fruta for part of the year, but most of the year here. And I loved Breckenridge, I miss it so, and I'm not here. So, I'm asking you to maybe put a hold on that. I don't know how much money you shoveled out to them already, but, uh, just put a hold on it, and if you need to, you can do a vote. Go put it on the ballot, and we'll have a vote on it, and people may want this international. And where are international? Are they coming from Washington DC, Hong Kong? Where are these guys coming from, anyway? So, I don't like that layer, so I'm hoping you'll consider it and see and massage it, and maybe we can get rid of the international one. Thank you. Yeah, North Korea, I'm sure they're top on our list.
Thank you, Carol.
Thanks.
Uh, any more public comment? Well, thank you all for coming to speak. As Carol said, it was very well-informed and wonderful group. Um, we love to hear people, um, and their input on what's going on in this town, and we absolutely do strive to be as collaborative as possible and try to work with people, and we will continue to try to work with everyone to make this work and move forward with, you know, being noxious weed-free and with dark sky as well. So, we just encourage you to be in touch with staff and continue with working with them, and the council certainly wants, um, wants this to work for everyone moving forward. So, thank you all for being involved and coming tonight. Public comment is closed. We're gonna move on to the Breck Tourism Office update. Lucy Kay. I know. Good to see you, Carol.
You just have to smile, right? Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, quick lodging update, it's, uh, pretty much the same as it was the last time I was here. We're still at sixteen percent off, um, for the summer, uh, in room nights. Revenue is holding at eleven percent off, and again, that's a function of ADR. Um, and our ADR, we know, is due to larger units being booked, not necessarily price increases that are too much. So, questions on that? We, we took a look at, um, you know, kind of what's in the market, and, you know, a good chunk of that, the room nights or the revenue that's down is Colorado-based, which, you know, we're not marketing there, but we are starting, um, a PR effort in the Front Range. The first, I just signed off on the first release tonight, actually, that will go out tomorrow. So, we will be pitching every week, just something that's new, something that's interesting in Breckenridge for, um, Front Range that may want to come up on the weekend. And, um, so, in that, Dick, thank you for the update on the mom meeting, the meeting of the minds meeting. Um, we did have some good follow-up with a lot of the lodgers. Sometimes in these meetings, people don't share in the meeting, but, you know, we have a lot of good follow-ups after the fact, which did happen with the lodgers. Um, and this Thursday, we were meeting with retail, restaurant, and activities people as well. So, I expect that will be, um, a really good meeting. Two ideas, like, we're just, we're throwing out, just, we're open to, you know, whatever the business community, within reason, would like us to try. So, the Front Range promo is, or the Front Range PR is one thing, was actually recommended by the agency, and would help the lodgers on the weekends, especially like somebody like Beaver Run, where their conference business is pretty good, but it's their weekends that are open, so it makes sense for us to help. Um, another one we thought about, um, and we put out to the community, was a booking incentive. So, for ten days, anybody who booked within a ten-day window, booked anytime for the rest of the summer, at least three, three nights or more, would be eligible for, um, a pretty good, um, like a sweepstakes, thousand-dollar, um, thing, we would give away ten of those. We're not getting a lot of interest from the lodging community on that, so that may not exactly work for them, so that's, that's okay, but we are open to other thoughts that they may have. And certainly, I'm, we're looking forward to see what's gonna come out of this Thursday's meeting. Yeah, I think this will be a much more vocal group, and so this should be good. One of the, what's in the, uh, just to go back to the Front Range pitch, um, what's in this, uh, week's, uh, pitch is, uh, we have started, Kerry O'Connell in our marketing department came up with the idea and put together a wildflower watch. So, she goes out, she takes pictures of kind of what's in bloom. We're being very mindful of what trails. We are open to sell, you know, sending people on, so we are careful about that. Um, but we're working with Ella from Open Space, who would be the, um, the flower expert, if you will. Um, so that will run all summer, and, um, so I think it's a good idea. Last year, we did the leaf brief, and that got some pretty good traction. So, um, other, in addition to that, we are looking at what kinds of events we might still be able to produce or enhance yet this summer. But I think, you know, and looking forward to twenty-six, we're also revamping our priorities in our plan going forward. And what we're looking at at this point is putting more emphasis on PR, because we're having a lot of good success there. Um, so we'll probably, um, you know, elevate that quite a bit in our plan. Um, same thing with events. You know, we'll keep that as an addition to the plan, so we can look at that separately. And then the other piece, where last year, we talked about welcoming being sort of an umbrella focus. I think in tandem with that, we want to elevate service and everything around service. So, when we have our meeting with you all in August, we'll have more detail on some of those things, but those are the three prongs that we're looking at elevating for twenty-six. So, questions or comments?
Sounds great. Questions for Lucy? We're very glad you're our partner. It really makes, like, just, I think the whole council feel really good that you're the mind that's kind of watching and tracking all these numbers, and you just.
Yeah, wish we could change them. But thank you for that. I, we appreciate it. I mean, you know, everybody's paddling hard, but it's, we're just, it's just a weird time out there. Thank you.
All right, moving on to continued business, second reading of Council Bill Series twenty twenty-five, Council Bill number ten, an ordinance approving an amended and restated fiber lease and network operations agreement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For you is the second reading of the amended and restated fiber lease and network operation agreement between the town and ALO Communications. These amendments increase the revenue for infrastructure investment, ensure that ninety, uh, fiber ninety-six hundred network continues to serve the community. There has been no changes since first reading, and we recommend that you pass it on second reading.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions? Any comments from the public on Council Bill number ten, series twenty twenty-five? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill number ten, series twenty twenty-five, the title of which has been read into the record. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, May.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Moving on to Council Bill number eleven, series twenty twenty-five, an ordinance approving the grant of cable franchise to Comcast of California, Colorado, Florida, Oregon, Inc., and approving a cable franchise agreement between the Comcast of California, Colorado, Florida, Oregon, Inc., and the Town of Breckenridge, Colorado.
Before your first second reading is the Comcast franchise agreement for cable television services. This renewal maintains the town's oversight authority, preserves franchise fee revenues, and ensures continued support for public, educational, and government programming. There has been no changes since first reading, and staff's recommendation is that you pass it on second reading.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Any comments from the public on Council Bill number eleven? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill number eleven, the title of which the mayor read adeptly into the record.
Any further discussion?
Chris, nice job negotiating both of these contracts.
Thank you, Dick. Appreciate it.
Agreed.
Team, team effort, for sure.
Roll call, please, May.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, we have no new business tonight, um, and we have no planning commission decisions, so I think we're ready to move into Planning Matters B, BGV Parcel Three Site Plan Modification de novo hearing. Sarah and Mark.
Good evening, everybody, Mayor and Council. I'm Sarah Crump, Senior Planner for the town. And with me here tonight, we have Mark Truckee, Community Development Director. Although I don't know how much help Mark's gonna be, he's just off of his sabbaticals. Before you tonight, um, of course, the BGV Parcel Three Site Plan Modification de novo hearing. Um, this, uh, parcel three development is pursuant to the development agreement that was passed with the Town Council and BGV April ninth of twenty twenty-four. Um, so just quickly, a summary of the approved project. This is the site plan that was approved, um, in November of twenty twenty-four for parcel three. There are, um, sixteen units and eight duplexes, approximately thirty SFIs, just under that, in density-wise. And this, of course, was the approved site plan from last year. Earlier this year, the Colorado Passenger Tramway Safety Board, um, requested revisions from BGV regarding the site plan for this lot. Um, they requested that three of the buildings be moved out from underneath the gondola pathway, directly under the car pathway. Um, and so due to this, the applicant is requesting a site plan modification. Before we talk about what's changing, I do want to go over, um, there are four buildings, um, which are currently already entitled. Let's make this a little bigger so you guys can see. Building three point one, three point two, one point one, and one point two are already, um, entitled with, uh, through an infrastructure permit that was issued by the Town's Public Works Department, as well as a right-of-way permit, and then eight different building permits for each of the units in these structures. And so this portion of the site plan that's in red here, already entitled, and it's not part of the modification request, um, so we won't be talking about that area for this hearing tonight. And I did want to point out, um, you'll notice on this plan, uh, the buildings that are already entitled, um, a couple of them are off the plane up here, but there were some slight shifts in, uh, location for these, and that is typical between the development permit approval and building permit issuance. Um, this happens often when civil drawings, uh, are finalized and engineering code and building code come together. There's often some minor changes, and we go through that process routinely with the planning department, and we approve that on a staff level. Um, the changes that are being requested through this hearing, um, rose to the level that they did need to have a special, uh, separate hearing for the project. Um, so what is the request? Off of the plane up here to the top, building three point three, um, is turning diagonally, and it'll just now be perpendicular with Woods Drive. That's the first move. Um, building two point one is moving here. Building two point two is moving here. And building two point three is moving down here. Um, along with these changes, of course, um, the road access needed to change. Previously, there was a center cul-de-sac, that's no longer possible, so the cul-de-sac is moving further to the south. A little bit more hardscape, approximately three thousand square feet more hardscape with this plan, but the overall site disturbance and the location of the buildings, um, pushed further north, um, into a more compact space. Some things that are not changing with the modification request, um, of course, are the use, those thirty SFIs of density that I mentioned, um, building mass, building height. Um, architecture and architectural materials are all proposed to stay the same, as well as the amount of parking that's provided on the site. Um, is actually increasing slightly, but, um, not to a level of significance. So, let's, um, jump right into the policies and how they're affected by these changes. Get rid of some of my blue marks, but I'm not able to do that for some. Under, the first policy that we'll consider is Policy Nine, which is location of structures setbacks. The new location of this building, two point three, is now approximately thirty-seven feet from the, um, perimeter boundary. Um, the requirement is fifteen feet, so, um, that is not an issue, um, relocating this building to the space. There are a few other policies, um, that I want to mention. Of course, no removal and storage, Policy thirteen, refuse, which is, and recycling, Policy fifteen. Circulation, internal and external circulation policies sixteen and seventeen, and then open space, Policy twenty-one. These all, um, changed somewhat with the site calculations and the changing amount of hardscape, but they're all compliant, um, under this modification request, so we won't dwell on those, um, policies since staff finds those to be compliant. So, moving on, in the development agreement, um, there were waivers for different development code policies and engineering code policies. Um, two of those were a waiver for Policy Seven, which is site and environmental, um, design, as well as Policy Twenty-two, um, landscaping. And those policies were both waived in order to, um, accommodate, I don't quote here, "the effort to preserve the trees along Park Avenue and provide revegetation efforts consistent with the conceptual plan." Um, so the conceptual plan was from November twenty twenty-three, that was included in the development agreement. Um, and I also have a version of that here to share with you as well. So, this was the conceptual plan. Um, the buffer trees that were shown in bright green were to be retained. The ones that were purple and pink were to be removed. And then, um, the conceptual plan for revegetation was shown in kind of a hunter green here. I'm sorry. This is what I want. So, um, with moving this building to the south, two point three, a couple of things happened. Um, it requires a new drainage and retention pond over here to make sure that water from the wetlands isn't flowing towards this new structure. And it will require the removal of these three trees here in purple, um, that are existing currently on the site, um, but would need to be removed with relocating this building. Staff finds that the proposal for replanting is very robust, um, and has improved since the November approval in twenty twenty-four with the modification plan. They've increased the number of trees that they're proposing by approximately thirty, so from one hundred and thirty-something to one hundred and So from 130 something to 166 trees now proposed on the site. 60 of those, I counted earlier, will now be new buffer trees along Park Avenue. Those will range in height. Deciduous trees will be two to three-inch caliper and 10 to 15 feet in height. And evergreen trees will be eight to 14 feet in height. 14 feet is a pretty large tree to be planting. And that is not your typical, what you see. Most new plantings are between six to eight feet, and that's, that's your average. So they are proposing above-average height trees and a fairly robust number of trees along this area. The applicant did work with staff. We met on site about three times. I personally went out there more than three times to come to some, to assess the area and determine if there were trees that could be saved. We did determine, am I out of time? We did determine that this cluster of trees could be retained. And so we're able to save, there's three, three to four trees here in this large clump that the applicant is now saying that they can still do the drainage improvements there and keep those trees, which was a good outcome of meeting on site. I, I want to point out on the conceptual plan, there are quite a few trees that are outside of the area of disturbance where off the applicant's property that were included in the conceptual plan. And of course, those are remaining, and they will not be disturbed through this process. There's also a large area of trees to the southwest here between the new development and the existing Woods Drive. All of those trees will also remain and are not proposed for, for disturbance. There's a couple that need to come down here that are like close to the gondola tower that, that will be removed with this process. But the majority of this cluster of trees will stay. One thing that will come out of the new trees is an instant gratification. Staff feels you're, when they're planted, they will be there. We won't have to wait years and years for those trees to provide a similar level of screening that the willows currently provide. We did measure the height of the willows. Those are approximately 12 feet tall on average. So if you're getting between eight and 14 feet new trees, 14-foot new trees, that is a similar level of height and buffer that's currently provided out there with the willows that are existing. Next, I want to jump to Policy 31. This was another policy that was waived through the development agreement. It talks about wetlands. But in exchange for waiving this policy, the applicant can agree to provide wetland disturbance mitigation through a purchase of wetlands credits in a bank. And the development agreement allowed for, if there came a case where they're disturbing more areas or a different area than was originally approved through the development agreement concept plan or through the development permit, that they would be able to purchase additional credits in the same way and make up for that additional disturbance. So with this change of plans, there's approximately 0.2 acres of new wetland disturbance. And the applicant has already provided purchase of those new credits. And the town engineer has reviewed the updated wetlands report and agrees that the mitigation efforts and the compensation that they provided is sufficient to follow the development agreement. To wrap things up, I will give a summary of the points. Our development code is flexible, so we assign positive, negative points for relative policies. Staff, it's not recommending any changes to points with this modification request. So as it currently stands, the project has negative one point under Policy Six, building height. And that's for ridge lines, unbroken ridge lines greater than 50 feet in length. So there's a 52-foot ridge, ridge line that's not broken up. So negative one point under that. And then they are getting positive one point for the aesthetically pleasing and vegetated detention ponds that they're proposing. Precedent on many, many projects allows for one point for providing vegetated drainage and retention areas. So a total passing score of zero. Again, staff does recommend that you approve this change. We feel that between the efforts of the applicant meeting on site, changing their plans, when we did notify them that we thought that the trees that they were proposing for removal, perhaps we could save more of them was significant effort. And again, the robust replanting schedule that they're providing with the new vegetation shown here. We do think that the proposal meets the concept plan from 2023, and we are recommending approval. And that concludes the staff presentation portion, but I am absolutely happy to take as many questions as you have. And we can go through anything that we discussed here. Thank you.
Ask questions now, or you want to hear the applicant's proposal first, and then we'll ask questions after that?
I think asking some questions now is appropriate because then the applicant can respond when the applicant presents. That would be pretty typical planning commission.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
There are. Is that my going? You had mentioned that with, that this modification required some additional retaining walls. You had that one sketch you were drawing on. Could you show me where those retaining walls are?
Yeah. So it's going to be these new ones that are just down here. I don't think quite as many were required when that structure was located up here. The site slopes a little bit towards.
How high are they? How tall?
Let me check. I do have the civil plans. I truncated the packet from 20, 220 pages down to only 21, so maybe I have that.
Sorry, I should have given you a heads up on that.
No. Do we have a way to get to the full packet? Can I just? Maybe it will take a second. Unless the applicant knows off the top of their head the tight of the retaining walls. But retaining walls are actually found under Policy Seven, which was waived by the development agreement. So we couldn't assign points under retaining walls. It was more of just alert, alerting you that they are existing and will be there.
Wait with some stipulations.
With stipulation that they would meet the concept plan for landscaping, yes. They're two to three feet, is the applicant said. Thank you.
Two to three feet.
Yes.
What, the, the size of these units is 55 to 7,000, is that what I saw?
Um, I think that's, I think they're less than, they're not 7,000. I think they're.
Including garage?
Including garage. I, I think somewhere around 62, but.
Thought I saw one that was 70, but whatever. So in the 6,000 square foot range, so the buildings are 12,000 square feet-ish.
Ish.
Eight of them?
I think we got the answer that we needed, sorry.
That's all I have for now.
Anybody else have questions for staff?
I have a couple of questions.
Go for it.
Sarah, I carefully reviewed the written submissions from the public, which resulted in the call-up of this project. And so, and wanted to just ask you a couple of questions about matters raised in those objections. But first, if you would maybe just, for the benefit of the, of the full council, explain the difference between a concept plan and a development application for a specific project?
Well, concept plans by nature can change. Meant to be representative. The concept plans found in the master plan, for instance, specifically state that the location of the buildings could change in the future. Development permit is a more solid understanding of where the buildings will be located. Certainly, there's some flexibility, as I talked about before, when a project goes from development permit to building permit with slight modifications of location in that stage, once civil and engineering drawings have been made. But definitely, a concept plan is less concrete than a development permit, which is less concrete than a building permit.
Would I be correct in saying that a concept plan is kind of a fit test to see if the project works in general?
In general, but.
You're on.
I'd, I'd agree with that. I mean, it's, it's a first attempt at seeing that fit test. The ultimate fifth test is the point assignment at, you know, the point analysis at the end of the project, the final hearing, but yeah.
You started out, and I think very clearly explained what this application entailed and what it didn't entail. One of the complaints in the, from the public indicated that sidewalk, the sidewalks in the plan didn't comply with town code. Were there sidewalks in the original development approval that the planning commission made?
No, there weren't sidewalks that extended up Woods Drive, to my knowledge. They do stop on Woods Drive approximately at the entrance to parcel two, which is to the north. And those sidewalks will serve well for the employee housing that'll be on the other side of, of Woods Drive, connecting those folks. Perhaps they don't have a vehicle. They'll be able to cross the new roundabout when that's constructed. So there will be a cross, a crosswalk there and a sidewalk on both north and south of Woods Drive from that parcel two entrance down Woods Drive to the east. The code talks about sidewalks under, I think it's Internal or External Circulation Policy 16 and 17. And it talks about requiring sidewalks when they're required. And we lean on the engineering code to tell us when that's the case. And the engineering code does require sidewalks for local collector and arterial, arterial roads. But it's up to, there's discretion involved and discretion toward, with the town engineer and Public Works. We would, did not require the applicant to put a sidewalk further up Woods Drive to only serve those three structures. There's not a sidewalk to connect to at the top of Woods Drive. The existing townhomes don't have sidewalks, and those are actually built too close to the road to implement a sidewalk in that location after the fact. So it would be kind of a sidewalk just for those, would, would have been a sidewalk just for those six units. And certainly, the developer could put them in, but it wasn't required by the town.
So I think you, you anticipated my next question by saying there aren't sidewalks right now in, on Woods Drive for the existing.
There are not.
Homes there, so it would have just ended anyway. And because you didn't remove any sidewalks in this project, the, the time to object to no sidewalks being there came and went when it was approved in November of 2024.
That's my understanding. Yep.
There's a suggestion that somehow the parking spaces, and I, and I'm assuming these are in parking spaces outside of a contained parking garage, are non-compliant. Would you address that?
So the commenter wrote about the distance between the front of the garage to the right-of-way, which there was a variance granted for that in the development agreement. So normally, what's required is 23 feet. So the distance from the garage to get a parking space behind the garage and have five feet of distance between the parking space and the right-of-way. So that's garage, 18 feet for your parking space, five feet for a space and area between the parking space and the right-of-way, and then the right-of-way. So again, that variance was granted to allow a shorter distance. So those are approximately 20 feet instead of 23. But functionally, because of the snow storage easement that's in front of all of those garages, there's an additional 10 feet. So it's really 33 feet between the garage and where the street would start. And where, if you're parking, you would be able to park in that area before you're in the road. So 20 feet, but functionally about 30-some feet.
And my final question concerns the detention pond, which was one to start with, and is now divided into their two different locations. Is that any different functionally from the original approval?
I might let the applicant speak more to this if they have more to add, but I'll, I'll try to explain. Going back to the original development agreement, it was discussed a lot about how the wetlands in that location probably were created when the gondola was constructed. And some of those new areas of wetlands weren't previously there. So with moving this structure, 2.3 is the one you're talking about, to the east, now you're kind of in a location of a, a wetland that it wasn't in previously. So that drainage and detention pond is needed to make sure water from the wetland area is contained to the south and doesn't, you don't want to flood your house. Yeah.
I'm not sure you got exactly what I was getting at, but is there functionally different on the site? Something between one detention pond and now there being two?
I'm sure an engineer would have a great explanation for you, so I'm going to defer to the applicant to answer that question.
Okay.
But I would think yes.
And in the point analysis, you suggest that there is a positive point because these detention ponds are vegetated detention ponds. What's the difference between a vegetated detention pond and an unvegetated detention pond?
You could just do rock and have a rock fill. And it would functionally serve the same as a vegetated one. But we offer the point incentive to make people spend a little extra money, get the nice-looking one with native plantings in it, so that it looks better than just having a rock fill area.
Great, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Great.
Sarah, thank you so much for your presentation. I think you did an amazing job explaining it to us. Is the proposed landscape plan substantially similar to the previously approved plan, in your opinion?
I think it's, the proposed landscape plan is above and beyond what was previously approved. The, the one change is that with the shifting of those buildings on the east side, they were just not able to preserve the trees that were originally on the concept plan. And, and kind of that happened over time. There's a few different reasons. I'll first state that the original survey from, that created the concept plan may have had inaccurate data. That's probably just looking at tree canopies from above. It probably didn't accurately portray tree life or anticipated longevity or health of the tree. And so a lot of those could have been gone prior to even last fall, when the new updated approved plan came in. And then between, again, building permit and the development permit, that building shifted, I think it's 1.2, shifted further to the northeast, so that a couple of trees there. So that a couple of trees there. It's kind of a cascading thing and not necessarily all the applicants follow a few different layers. It's why that clump of trees that we called buffer trees in the concept plan are not there anymore. And couldn't be saved.
And on the with these, this new proposed landscape plan, do we have or does the town have enforcement mechanisms to ensure that compliance is achieved?
So when planning conducts a final site inspection, we count every single tree. And you have to have the number of trees that were on your approved building permit plans. So if this is approved, it would go for a building permit set. And I confirm that the number of trees is equivalent to what's being shown here today for building for development permit purposes. And then at the final, when the construction is complete, I would again confirm that the number of trees is the same as what was proposed and shown to be installed on the building permit set.
Thank you.
Could I follow up on Jay's question there for just a second? Is it not uncommon to lose some trees that are planned to be saved during the construction process?
That's, it is common and so in our development findings and conditions, typically there is a finding where if a tree that's meant to be preserved is taken off or killed for whatever, maybe a tractor runs over its roots or it gets compacted or or just maybe it's dying and and the stress of construction around it, it goes. We do require that those trees are replaced at a two to one or a three to one ratio, so.
It's in the findings and conditions for this project?
Typically, it's in the findings and conditions I would need to, if you would like that to be a specific finding for this, that could be the case. And I can confirm that it it's a standard condition, so I think it's probably already in the set that we prepared for the planning commission, but we can confirm that that's the case.
Along those same lines, is it typical? Because I heard you say that we actually wrote in a little bit of wiggle room for impacts to wetlands as well, which I wasn't aware of and but I'm just wondering, is it typical that when an applicant is developing a site and some wetland impacts are approved, that sometimes additional wetland impacts become necessary due to engineering or whatever? Is that, does that happen often or why did we write that into the development agreement?
I couldn't speak to the origin of that in the development agreement, but it is seven point one A article in there. And as far as typical, I don't know how many projects we have that are actually constructed in wetlands, so.
Yeah, it's way fewer.
You wouldn't normally be able to impact more wetlands than you are allowed to do specifically by the development permit. So I think the development agreement had that allowance, but they still had to provide the wetland mitigation credits in order to do it. I'm, my guess is that based on the history that Sarah provided regarding the fact that there was at least some some discussion around or some belief that the wetlands at the were created by the creation of the gondola, so they weren't necessarily naturally occurring wetlands in that area. And so there was a, you know, sense between council and the developer that if they did need to move buildings around and further impact those wetlands in that specific, you know, basically in the area that is being impacted, that there was room to do that in the plan. It's my best guess.
That makes sense.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
How far along are we with the design of the roundabout?
That's a good question for engineering. I know they have civil drawings and or the applicant.
I'd rather hear, no offense, but I'd rather hear, do we know and does the engineering have anything?
We've seen plans. I don't, I don't know the level of approval.
The roundabout will be permitted through C dot and we are in applicant, applicant is in application process with C dot, but they have not been final approved. We have seen thirty percent plans at this point.
Okay, so we don't really know definitively where the line of disturbance for the roundabout will be in relation to this property.
Not until we get a permit from C dot.
Okay.
It can shift. And that was part of the contemplation for the wetlands to disturbance to be altered as well.
Awesome, thank you.
Is it the typical process that that we would approve, this might be more for Mark, that we would approve a project where they were still waiting on a variance from the tram board to encroach on that space? Or was it done in the wrong? I guess I'm just wondering, was this done in the wrong order? Like, they should have gotten that variance to be in the clearance right of way before they came to us? Or is it typical that because they didn't know what to even submit to the tram board, then they had to come to us first?
Yeah, well, I guess, Kelly, it's it's not typical that we see the projects with and so you know, based on all the information they had provided, BGV had provided for two years and discussions with the tram board that they relayed to us, this wasn't going to be an issue. And so we went ahead with that understanding, did not require that upfront. You know, it's probably less than, you probably want to get something from the tram board before we ever approve anything again.
I think it's the case that the tram board requires approved plan prior to submitting to them, actually. So they did do it in the right order.
Okay.
Sarah, did the structures change size from the initial proposed plan to the one that's in front of us now?
No, these are the same size. I think there's maybe a little decrease in size, favorite like five square feet.
Thank you. From the conceptual plan from the very beginning, when we first started the development agreement discussion. As I recall, they were significantly smaller back then.
And the development agreement always anticipated up to thirty SFEs would be allocated. So the drawings may not have reflected the actual size at the time.
Terms of square feet, but I think what was initially presented was infinitely smaller in terms of square feet. That's what I recall.
I recall it being pretty similar to what we approved, Dick.
Do you?
Go back, I mean, yeah. There was discussions of townhomes at one point, but gravitated to it would kind of move to duplexes.
Yeah, number of units and number of buildings was the same all along. I just remembered them being quite a bit smaller in square footage and scale. But you're right, I mean, the number of units and number of buildings remain the same for sure.
Any final questions for staff before we hear the applicant's presentation? Okay, Graham, are you doing that?
Mayor and town council Graham Frank, I'm the chief development officer of BGV. Also with me, Bill Campi, who is the principal of DTJ Design, as well as Chris Noreika, who is our vice president of construction. If we have questions on engineering matters, construction matters, those sorts of things. I think it'd be helpful to start with the questions, answer the questions so that then we can frame the the rest of the presentation. Dick, on your questions, conceptual plan to today, it's the exact same. Square footage was based on thirty SFEs. Each unit is about thirty two hundred square feet, including the garage on average. So across that site, just under fifty eight thousand square feet total, ranging from the five bedroom to the three bedroom units. So with that conceptual plan, yes, things have moved around. But in terms of size, we stayed right there with that, and that includes the garage in those square footages. Where are we on the design of the roundabout? So we've completed what's called the geometric review with C dot. C dot hires a consultant, that consultant reviews the plans, the geometries, the entries to the roundabout. Then that report comes back to Shannon and her team, who then review it again. Then we submit our FIR set to C dot for the next phase of the approval. But that geometric review and Shannon will let you weigh in if you agree, really thousand that circumference of the roundabout space, the roundabout, the offsets coming into the roundabout. So that piece of the review is done at this point.
I agree there won't be any major shifts, but we still need full approval.
Yeah, so Shannon's the next person in that process, first C dot, then Shannon, then back to C dot for the FIR. Stephen, to your question, I think they were answered on the concept plan being the fit test and and what we did there. Sidewalks, no, there were not. Two detention ponds obviously were set up to stop those velocities of that water coming across the wetlands. Or I'm sorry, across site, which was a tenant of the original plan, trying to drive as much water back into the wetlands as we could to increase the vibrancy of that site. Because what had happened is, as as was mentioned, when they built the gondola, they built a trench that made that water bypass a lot of that wetland area to keep it dry to build the gondola. That trench then turned into wetlands over times because time because it wasn't filled back in. And so one of the tenants, cornerstones of this project was to offset that velocity at the upper side of the site, the high side of site, push all of that water back into those upper areas of the wetlands so it could percolate down all the way to Park Avenue to get the most vibrancy across that space and slow the velocity of the water across the site. So that's just the continued integration of the design as we do the stormwater runoff of all of those things. A to stop the flood of basements, but B to make sure that we're pushing water to the correct places, detaining it in the others and then moving it on into the stormwater system. So that's the long answer to your question. Jay, to your question on the landscape plan and what are the enforcement mechanisms? So the biggest enforcement mechanism of all is that the price we're selling these units, the only person that wants screening more than you guys is us. And so we want to make sure that these houses have the appropriate screening from Park Avenue. So as we looked at that original plan, some of those numbers that that Sarah recited, I think, really critical. In the original plan, the development agreement plan, there was a hundred and fifty six trees. In the approved plan with the red area that you guys saw today, there was a hundred and thirty two trees. What's in front of you today has a hundred and sixty six new trees. And those new trees are in that eight foot to twelve foot range where we measured the majority of the willows that are out there today at about nine feet. So one thing that we didn't do, take into account when we did the tree survey, the tree buffer, all of those things, we counted every single tree that was standing up in there. During just the process of then to now, in areas that we haven't disturbed, multiple trees have fallen down because they're dead, right? Beetle kill, root kill, all those things that happen with the wind events. And so lesson learned for us, I think we would be more specific in the future on that tree canopy count, alive, dead, critically injured, split roots, split trees, those sorts of things. But what we have come back with today, we think is a very biodiverse and layered landscaping plan between Park Avenue and those houses that are right there to provide a screening noise buffer and biodiversity to stop against what's killing all those lodgepole pines out there today. So that's where you see the spruce and the all the deciduous aspen trees that are in there today. So those are the changes that have happened on the tree count. Kelly, to your two questions, tram board, tram board will not accept a concept plan. You have to have a entitlement just because of the number of things that would go in front of them. With all the initial checks we did, we used a consultant who was formerly on the tram board and on the tram board technical services committee and a high level employee for Palma at the time. His take was based on the precedent set by the Telluride Mountain Village gondola, the proximity to buildings and the buildings that it was flying over, that this would be approved in this area. Obviously, as the tram board changes, as member changes, as technical services changes, those things change. We use the exact same consultant. It was actually his son at Iron Mountain Engineering who got the approval for the Mountain Village gondola, put in our application with the tram board. And when I say our application, it's actually Vale Resorts who applies to the tram board for the variance because they're responsible for the airspace and the and the safety of the gondola. So they're the ones that define what can go where and those changes that came about. So that was one of your questions. The other was on the wetland impact. The reason we put those in and it was a great point by Shannon when we went through. So when we adjusted that trench that was built and the velocity of the things going through, Shannon brought up, you know, there may be a larger impact as we cut that off and look at the buildings and the site down around the Park Avenue side of the site. So that's why we wrote that in and we actually bought additional wetlands credits because of that going through. I think that addresses all of the questions that were asked. Were there any that I that I glazed over there? I think, Dick, I got yours, okay. So in terms of of presentation, Sarah, as you guys know, has done phenomenal job of this and the five other projects we have going right now. But on this one, going back to the cornerstones of approval of this project, the cornerstones, and this was as we understood them in order of importance, maximize and preserve the wetlands, preserve the open space and then landscaping. So those were going back to all the notes from the council meetings, from everything we did with the development agreement. So as we went through and we we received these changes from the tram board, those were the things that we worked through to say, how can we move the buildings, maximize the space and preserve those three tenants? And so that's what you see with the more compact site plan. And the offset of the of the wetlands, we have preserved more space on that side underneath the gondola and moving over into that wetland area. Number one, preservation of open space. As Sarah said, the site got much more compact as we brought those buildings in. There was a little bit more hardscape, but we believe that it was well within the code. And so the site, you know, more compact development that we believe is still inside the code. And then the landscaping and screening, that's why we came back with so much more of what we believe is a robust plan and going through this. To those lessons learned, one of the things that we found, as you're looking at the site, Sarah, how do I move this? As you're looking at the site today, this is over on the parcel two, the North Gold Rush lot, but you can see where those willows have been removed, what the site looks like in terms of screening with the existing lodgepole pines. We believe that both of these trees will fall over by the time we complete construction, not, you can see, they're waddled, they're fenced, they're about seventeen feet from any disturbance, but they're just dying. And that was just part of the tree study, they're dying and we will replace them per the code. But I think the thing to note here is, once those all of those willows are removed, you you lose the majority of the screening that's there today. And so we believe with this new plan, you can see here again what those willows provide versus the first level of branches on the trees. So as the willows have grown up, a lot of those lower branches of trees have died. And so as we look at this, just taking into account what we're doing, understanding, yes, the willows provide that buffer. But as you look at these stand of trees, you can see we have a couple of trees here that are just getting ready to fall over and one that's completely dead. So just an understanding out there, we're making the best effort to preserve all of these trees. But you can see this isn't an area that's nowhere near any construction. We will continue to do all of our best efforts, but some of these trees are just sick and dying as we go through this, just an understanding there. Do the tree count? This, you guys can see here, these are a couple of the trees that just fell down since we did the tree count. And you can tell these two trees have not died in the last twelve months. You know, not a single pine needle on them and they are, they're just laying down. So again, the lesson learned of what we could do better with that tree count going forward as we look at and just to decide, design the site. Here you can see a good example of where the willows have been cleared and where the willows have not been cleared and what's really providing the buffering. So you can see these two trees that are existing here. Very limited buffer into the site outside of those, those willows that you can see popping up over the fence. What we are planning to do in the future. Is instead of this line of willows coming down and, and blocking the road. For reference, this fence is six feet tall. Our plan is to move to something like this. So from that six foot fence, you're seeing now twelve to fourteen foot trees. That'll be planted at a mature level and brought in for that screening. And then you can start to see that second level of screening that you guys saw in the packet behind that where you have screening closer to the houses. So a multi-layer screening to Park Avenue that I think is much more aesthetically pleasing. Than the miscellaneous state of willows from dead or dying willows. One thing that's great about willow, even when it does die, even though it looks like spine sticking up, it provides good screening. But we have a truly varied livelihood of the willows here. Here you can see a good alive, alive and thriving willow. From here to here in an area that hasn't been touched and will not be touched by the development. You see that variation of the dead and dying willows across. Where we think this move to a much more robust tree plant here and throughout the site. Is a better move for the development overall. So although it did change from what we expected. What we got from the tram board was not what we were expecting. And so that brought us to where we are today, where we believe we provided the best environment. For A, anyone driving on Park Avenue, but B also the occupants of the site while staying within those tenants. That were approved in the conceptual plan and then the subsequent plans that we went through with the engineering team, taking into account the roundabout. And then the building department as we received their comments. So with that, I can take any questions.
Thanks, Graham. Questions for the applicant?
Give me a second to find it. We had originally, we had two, two to one credit purchase from the Cairo Western Slope in Lufi program. Will this be a two for one as well?
We actually went above that, Jay. We went more than the two for one by about an additional point one six acres. With the credits that we purchased. Correct.
Okay, so you're not using?
The whole credit, just to offset what's required by the development agreement and engineering. We actually bought in excess of that, that will be installed on an off-site wetlands project.
I'm not sure who this question goes to. I understand why you chose this particular tree buffer, but I'm just wondering, don't the willows themselves contribute to that wetland health measure? Like the willows are part of the wetlands.
Correct. In the area that we're doing the tree buffer. None of those wetlands still exist. So that, that.
Were never, there was no wetlands in the, in this particular buffer area, this is not a wetland area. So.
Okay, I guess I was confused because I thought Graham mentioned some willow removal from there.
There was willows, yes, but that was not necessarily a classified wetland in that particular area. There was some on the other side. We have a, a wetland mitigation diagram that'll kind of show you where the wetland was, but it's not all on the entire frontage. It was just where that ditch came through the property, if that makes sense.
Here, you can see it here. This is where that ditch was dug and feeding down to those willows here. Could you pull that up a little, Greg? Oh, I'm sorry, Derek.
Please. Just go to the bottom right there.
Thanks. So that's that ditch there that was dug and the areas that that was feeding here. So that's now been cut off. And so none of this wetlands here is still being fed by that. Which, that's why those willows were removed there, because all that water source was cut off as we created the site.
So, so along park, you can see there was not existing wetland. You can see the hashed areas was the existing wetland. Does that make sense?
Yes. So are you saying those willows you removed were already like dead or in the wrong place?
They were, they were dead or dying as we cut off this trench here. It was coming down, bringing that water across the site there. Because all of this water was redirected this way from our ecological impact engineer. We built a swale that directs all of that water back towards the wetlands there, which cut off that water source at the bottom of the site. And then to those pictures, I need you to move it back to those pictures.
Graham, I think it's important for you to clarify if you cut off the water, which then made the willows die. Or if those were not in the wetlands. And.
Sure. Again, the classified wetlands, the only classified wetlands on the property are in that hashed area, just to be clear.
Okay, but I do want to confirm that, that what Graham said was by cutting off that ditch, those willows died.
Oh, actually, I take you to the picture right now.
I don't know enough about that.
Yep, that's perfect. Thank you. Here, so you can see here, these sparse little well, willows that are here. Those have not been removed yet. They will be removed when we plant those spruce trees along that frontage on Park Avenue. The willows that I was talking about that were removed were in this area here. Where that drainage came through and it was wetlands. So non-wetlands willows here that will be removed and replaced with spruce trees in the future. The willows that we pulled out of the site in the, this is all of the approved site area. That we pulled out that were around that drainage ditch on the page that you saw prior. Great, great.
And you are, that's what you were mitigating.
Correct, you're exactly right.
You feel, so one of the things that we talked about, and I'm going from recollection, so Shannon Smith maybe can jump in. But that that drainage ditch was something that was sort of artificially, you know, created probably during the construction of parking. And or the gondola going through there. And so even it became a wetland because it was basically siphoning water off of the existing wetland. And then what ended up happening is because it was a ditch, it let water go in and cultivate those wetlands. But the, or I mean, sorry, those willows, but the willows were never in the wetland. Totally following that. I just want to, I just was looking for a yes or no, like you guys cut off that ditch and that's why the willows.
Surrounding that ditch and then those willows that are existing sparsely beside that, these trees today. And let me, let me zoom in where you can see, you can see it. You see these couple of sparse willows here. Those we will be removing and putting in spruce trees instead.
Okay. Any more questions for the applicant? Or staff? Okay. No? All right, so I'm going to move on then to public comment. Okay. Thank you very much.
But thank you for the time.
We are now going to open for public comment on the BGV parcels, three site plan modifications.
Good evening. My name is Richard Himmelstein. My main residence is six seventy five Peak Six Trail, but I do reside on Woods Drive. And so this is a very important issue for me. But I just want to back up for a second, just. Does anyone ever wonder why when they drive the roundabout at Park and, and Route nine, that it's hard to stay in that, in that roundabout? And the reason is because C dot messed up the surveying and it's a lot tighter than it's supposed to. Basically, the, the, the wall ended up being where the sidewalk should have been. So they just shrunk that whole, whole roundabout. But the reason I'm bringing this up is. It, it is related to my concerns about the roundabout that's going to be built. And going up Woods Drive, basically cars are going to come off the roundabout. They're going to want to see what's up there. There's a approximately ninety degree bend. People coming back with groceries. I think there's twenty eight Woods residences. But people are going to be walking back with groceries and if cars are coming down, cars are going up. I mean, it's, it's going to be a hazard for people, especially in snowy weather. And a sidewalk is paramount for Woods Drive just to bring safety. And people are saying, well, the, the Woods townhomes don't have it, but it's a dead end street up there. It's not where the busyness is going to be. So I really strongly urge council to consider putting in a sidewalk. It's going to be such a safety issue and I just am requesting that. I also wanted to just talk about safety in general. For example, I sent an email just recently to the, the council and, and Sarah. It's my understanding based on the, on the variants. And, and this construction in this space, Tower Three is the main tower in this construction zone. And it's supposed to be boxed out thirty feet by thirty feet. And when, when the gondola is running, there's got to be all sorts of safety protocols and none of it's being done. I, I sent you guys a picture tonight that was taken today. I estimate the box out of Tower Three is, is approximately four feet by four feet. And like my concern about the, the gondola variance is they're not even following their ground rules for day one. I'm worried about the safety protocols long term. And if, if they basically drop just half a townhouse, I believe all these issues can be resolved. And, and back to the, the concept plan and, and, and talking about. The concept plan basically was presented to council. And based on that, they got various waivers in the development agreement. So they had to abide by the concept plan and along Woods Drive, and I say halfway at that bend going up. Originally, that concept plan showed thirty two trees. And then when they did the modification plan, they, they realigned the, the buildings and they fit twenty, twenty trees. But because they realigned it, I thought it was better and I didn't object. Now they're trying to, because of the tramway, they're trying to squeeze all that together. And there's only, I, I count eight trees there now. And so, so when, when Sarah says this modification request doesn't apply to that, it certainly does. Because it's a material change that, that, that area is going to be naked and it's just not acceptable. I, I also wanted to just talk about some inconsistencies that I'm really confused about. One of them is, and I had given the town council copies of, of the planning meeting. Where Shannon and Sarah confirmed that there was no waivers given for parking. And I've read the development agreement, I've read everything, there's no waivers. And all of a sudden now, when they designed the building too close and I pointed out that, that it's too close. They, they say there's a, a variance granted for, for that and I didn't see it and I'm just. So at the last planning hearing, they said there was no waivers and now all of a sudden there is. Another one that has me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? Okay, public comment is closed. Do we have further discussion? Any further discussion?
A couple thoughts before my final thought. How do you want this to go, Kelly?
Okay, so I think we should have a bit of a discussion and then we'll see if there's a motion to be made. And then from there.
Yeah, just a, just a note, yeah, you, you all can vote tonight. You have thirty days to make your final decision from the date of this hearing. And your final decision will be in writing. So if you vote tonight, then there will be another. Point at which you will issue a written decision that will be the final decision. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So I might just make a couple of comments. Seven R. You know, which relates, well, wave seven R, which relates to the retaining walls. If they are in fact only three feet tall, I'm not as worried about them. I thought they were taller. But just. Everything is based, the waiver of seven R is based on. The buffer of existing mature trees. You know, landscaping twenty two A and twenty two R. In the development agreement, seven point two A. It requires an effort to preserve the trees. I, I frankly haven't seen much effort to preserve the trees. They're great. They're gone. I know it's easy to talk about how poor health they are when they're all gone, but they're all gone. They've been gone for months. So were most of the willows. I think it was originally contemplated that we were going to keep the willows, which provide good screening. I remember them being green and pretty healthy and yes, they weren't part of the wetlands. So they, they created a, quite a nice buffer and the willows along with the lodgepoles. Created, created a, a nice layering way higher than fifteen feet. I know Graham mentioned nine feet for the willows, but I have a picture of Chris Kulik with the tape showing twelve feet for the willows. So if you have a twelve foot height of willows and then the lodgepoles above. That's significantly different buffer than the new trees. The new, the new trees, the picture on, I think I have on my packet of page two forty four, the, the really pretty one. You know, with all the landscaping, the rendering of the development. If we, could we try to find that? Sarah, is this that, that picture, I've got it on two forty four. You know, it looks quite nice. And. It's, it's. I'll wait till we get to that. You know, it, the, the development agreement requires the buffer with the existing, yeah, that's the one. Thank you. You know, this is not a plan in the language, exact language in the development agreement is. You know, the mature trees, the willows and the mature lodgewood. Or a plan substantially similar thereto. I, I don't think it is. If you look at this picture, the existing willow to the left, right there. That is the one Chris put his tape on, it's twelve feet. So, you know. That, that to me is not significantly similar. So I, I. I'm really struggling with this thing. I, I, you know, there's been tremendous effort and I appreciate, I appreciate the applicant's efforts to, to make this work. I appreciate staff's efforts. We've all worked really hard on this. However, the one thing that's never been considered in any of the discussions I've seen. Throughout planning, throughout staff reports and tonight, is just making the thing a little bit smaller. I, for me, this just shows it just doesn't fit. And we're not saying you can't do it. We're not saying, we're just saying truly work with us and truly make an effort. And just make these things a little bit smaller. That's all I'm asking. And so I've got more final comments, but I'll let others go now.
Anybody have anything before they want to say some final comments? Is that your final comment or you want to not go first?
I'll go ahead and go. I, as you guys recall, during our development agreement, it was quite some time ago discussion. I, as you guys recall, during our development agreement, it was quite some time ago discussions and it was quite lengthy. So we, we had a fairly lengthy discussion about the importance of the buffer here. And I guess why is that so important? It's, it's, it's the primary entry to Breckenridge for the majority of our guests. These are the, the people that, that are the economic engine for our town, for all of the small business on Main Street, for all of the, the working people of Breckenridge. And we already have a large parking structure on the east side of Park Avenue, just adjacent. Now we, we really wanted to, to try to maintain the character as, as in our, in our DMB. You know, our driving documents, the character of Breckenridge is so important. It's not tall buildings on both sides of the streets as we enter Breckenridge. It's some, some natural landscaping, some natural forest to, to see when you come in. And that was very important to me then, and I think we all agreed. I think we were unanimous on the importance of that buffering. It's all gone, it's all been scraped, it's, it's gone now. So, you know, how do we, how do we go from here? You know, this is probably as good as we can do with the landscaping plan. My concern with it is it's, it's, it's planted on a very narrow piece of land. You know, you know, I, I think theoretically we could draw a line of disturbance on the, on the west side of it, on the building side and say the developer, we're going to put up a hard fence here. And you can't encroach on this line of disturbance. However, on the east side of that is an undesigned roundabout under complete control of C dot. Once we start, once we approve this, they start building these buildings after they've pointed out over and over, we can't touch those, those other three or four buildings that have already been approved. And once we approve this, we can't touch it. Regardless as to whether C dot, you know, shrinks that, that little strip of land where this landscaping is designed to go. That, that, that is a risk I'm not willing to take. I, I, there's just no margin of error whatsoever in this. So we're risking any screening at all, in my opinion, if we approve this tonight. I, I think a simple solution is for the applicant to rework either the number of units or the size of units. Todd found it for me, thanks Todd, but it's 57,000 square feet total. That should give us a little wiggle room to, to work with, to try to, to make this, give us a little bit of a margin of error and ensure that this screening can be done. You know, we were told almost definitively before that the tram board's going to approve this encroachment. Well, they didn't. We're being told tonight that it's almost definitive that C dot has the line of disturbance where it's going to be. Well, we don't know. I don't want to take that risk. So for that reason, I'm going to vote no tonight in hopes that the applicant can just go back and, and, and work with us a little and, and make one or more of these buildings either a little smaller or one unit less, or whatever it takes to give us a little larger strip of, of land to ensure that this robust landscaping plan or one maybe even better can be installed. Those are my final comments.
Can I ask another question first off? Are the revegetation trees closer to Highway nine than, or to park than the willows? I can't find, these pages take forever to load, so I can't look at anything.
Let's take a look at the proposed landscape plans and we can make a judgment, probably. You can see approximately with the overlay here where some existing vegetation is in relation to Highway nine, and it looks like the proposed trees are behind that line.
There is some space between the homes and the veg that if they needed to be pushed back further, they could go a little closer to the homes or is there
This
the minimum distance?
Where the retaining walls are.
There, there is a slope down here, so planting may be not easily done in that location. The distance from property line to this dotted line is 15 feet. And then there's, earlier we said it was 37 feet from the property line to this building edge. So there's, you know, 20-ish feet here.
Thank you. You want to go next?
Can I ask another question? Sarah, in case the roundabout does take some of this land, is there anything we can put in the findings and conditions to require additional landscaping pushback? Or what would be our opportunity to preserve the buffer of the roundabout makes it harder with this plan?
I think that's an acceptable requirement in a finding and condition that there be some kind of contingency if, if right of way is, is taken from this property boundary, that, that landscaping is adjusted in some way. Another thing that's not being accounted for here is any landscaping that will be installed with the right of way. They, they will possibly put additional vegetation along with those plans as well. And so you're not seeing that on here.
You want to go?
Sure. I appreciate your comments and I, I do think that there is a impactful change to the entrance to town onto Park Avenue. And, and that's why I'd like to suggest that there's a performance based bond that is instituted with this that ensures that no matter what happens with the roundabout, what happens with that border that over a course of several years, that these trees and this vegetation is, is seen to prosper and to act as a barrier that it's intended for. I think that there is, these last minute design changes are absolutely undesirable. But it is as we see kind of the, the, the process that had to go through and that there wasn't any, any steps that were skipped or, or tried to be, the overcome or done and end around. And so looking at this, I, I, I can't help but see the volume of the waivers that were approved through this development agreement. And the generality of them have somewhat come home to roost a little bit. And I think that there, it's to serve as a reminder moving forward on the, the implications of our actions. But looking at where we are now, I think that having a a multi-year bond to ensure that these tree barriers and this vegetation is is successful, that that's put in the finding and conditionings. And then I would, I'd be in support of this application.
And is that something we can do?
Yeah, so I think right now as you're all are having this discussion, I'm taking notes. And basically I'm taking this as direction to staff to go and prepare a find, you know, findings and conditions document that we will then present to you. But I do need some directions. So as you discuss, letting me know you would like to see this condition in order to be in support or not in favor as Dick, you know, that's the information that we need so that we can give you something that you can vote on.
Yeah, and so we typically, typically what we use bonds for, we can do that, Jay, we could write that in as a condition. But typically we use them when it's the end of the season and they can't get the landscaping installed. They want a CEO. So we'll take the cash deposit. And next year, when they come and they put in the landscaping, then we'll, we'll, we'll allow them to get that cash back. But there's also a requirement in our code that we can always can, if anything dies or fails, they must replant that. They, they must go back and put that landscaping in, replace that. So that's in our code as well. So we have that provision, but we're glad to take a look at that for you.
Thanks, Jay, and thanks, Dick. And Sarah, phenomenal job. Thank you for the great summary. I really appreciate your hard work. I'm sure it's been a lot of time and energy and yeah, very meticulous. So thank you. It's also good to see so many members of the public here engaged on this. And, and certainly appreciate all the, the work here at council to hopefully get this right. And you know, it's fascinating, Graham, thank you for kind of the background on the work you did with the tram board. You know, seemingly you had the right consultant on board to get that advice when we first started. And you know, turbulence, I think, always happens with real estate and real estate development. I appreciate everybody's efforts here to attempt to pivot, to get to a really good solution. In looking at the, the report, it mentions that 15 feet is the setback between Park Avenue. So really appreciate that right now that buffer, that new building or that the move building is at 37. And I went through and looked through town to kind of see how that compared to other buildings in our, you know, kind of Park Avenue corridor. And whether it's Main Street Junction or Main Street Station or Sawmill or River Mountain Lodge, you know, those buildings are closer to Highway nine and have much bigger mass. So from my perspective, what I like is that you've got a more, more of a buffer and you're shorter than those buildings. So I think that's a, a positive. And certainly from a sales side, it's going to be important for you to really screen Highway nine from, folks are going to be entertained at this price point. So I certainly see that, yeah, you're going to have probably more incentive than anybody to screen the heck out of, of Highway nine. I really like the concept of layering in a requirement if that, if the traffic circle moves and encroaches into that 37, stepping up like a, you know, an additional landscaping investment. I think that's an easy thing to accomplish in there and you'll probably want to do it anyways. So I think given staff's recommendation and given the, I think the layering that you've proposed, you know, from what I've seen in 300 units of new, new sales, that landscaping matures pretty robustly and usually to the point where some of the owners want to cut down those trees. So I, I think that's going to fill in and hopefully give a better feel to the entrance to town that is important to all of us, but that you've eloquently mentioned. I think it's going to be less imposing than many of the other structures along parks. So with that, I'm in favor of proceeding with the new plan with some of the stipulations on landscaping.
I do appreciate Dick, Jay, and now Todd's comments on this. And as I look at this project, I'm kind of beginning to look at it through the eyes of the, of a planning commissioner. And the first lesson that you learn is that it doesn't matter whether you like the project or not. What matters is, does it meet the code's requirements? And in this case, it does. And there are things that I would change if I were the designer. There's, you know, shrinking the project. I tend to always think projects are too big and that we're cramming too much program onto a piece of ground. But people have their rights and this went through a development agreement. And it was vetted and fit tested and it's kind of there. And when you analyze it against the development code, it comes up with a passing score without even trying to get magic extra points for landscaping, which probably much to my chagrin, would have been entered, awarded in a lot of other past projects that I worked on. But this is pretty straightforward. There's a roof line and there's detention ponds. And I wanted Sarah to talk about that a little bit because detention ponds that are just a hole in the ground full of rocks are pretty ugly. And a vegetated detention pond is a lot more expensive and a lot better looking. And we get two of them out of this, which I think is even better than one because one can flow down into the next one if it needs to. I intend to make a motion to approve this with a passing score of zero. And I have some conditions that I would make part of a motion, but I intend to vote to approve this project.
I think you've got to say the conditions now because we have to all agree whether we need them or not.
I intend to make a motion to approve this upon the findings and conditions set forth in the original planning commission approval, including if not already present, the required replacement of any trees lost during the construction of the project to completion at a three for one ratio. Also including a condition that any landscaping loss due to construction of the roundabout be replaced and revegetated at a level equal to or exceeding what is shown in this application and as supported by a performance based bond for a period of five years after completion of construction.
Thanks. I need a timeline reminder from staff. Are, do we expect the construction to all be completed prior to the roundabout?
Per the development agreement, they actually have to finish the roundabout first. Then they must finish parcel two first and have a completion certificate of occupancy for the employee housing on parcel two. And then, and only then can they start getting certificates of occupancy for parcel three.
Okay, thank you, that is helpful. I am still with Dick on this one.
I approached this very similar to Steve, how you laid it out. Ultimately, at this point, we're following our code and the development agreement. I supported this call up because this is a highly impactful area of town that's highly visible. So I think it does merit the added scrutiny from town council. But I really appreciate planning commission staff time on this. And ultimately, looking at our code, I agree that it meets the requirement. The buffer is incredibly important to us and that's why it was highly debated during the development agreement. But the plan presented, I think, achieves that buffer. I mean, again, if we could do whatever we wanted, it would be willows and open space, but that's not the case. There's development rights within this property. So there's going to be buildings, they're going to be impactful. The tools we have right now are within our code and this project meets the code. I'm supportive of this project with either the findings and conditions that Steve specifically mentioned, or if staff finds that there's something else that we should add to really preserve that buffer. I think that's the most important thing that we can do at this step. So I will support this project.
All right, I agree with really everything that's been said up here, both from the people who are supporting and those who aren't supporting. So I do land in the same place that it is a passing points and we've already approved the sizes through the development agreement. So I'm not going to revisit that. I also feel a lot better knowing that this was the correct way to do things with the tram board. I felt a little bit duped at first, but now that I know that that wasn't, that wasn't the case, I do understand that process better. Think the thing with the bond that goes beyond what we already have in the code is the opportunity to say something about how the revegetation should the revegetation should look like the visual simulation. It shouldn't just be like, oh, it died, so we replace it. I mean, if they plant a hundred and sixty-six trees and don't make it look, make it, you know, this shows it's like fully screened. You know, I mean, sure, you can see the top of the buildings, but you can't see hardly anything. And I understand that that's like an absolute best case scenario. I mean, those are the most beautiful trees I've ever seen. So best of luck to you. Best of luck to you and come to my house when you're done. But so I think that's the thing with the bond is that it's a real, it's, there's a lot of you know, reality that happens between seeing the visual simulations and then building the road and then stacking for five years snow against those trees. And then it doesn't look like that anymore. So I think that's where we're really interested in the bond is that five years down the road, it actually looks like this. So I don't know if there's a way to convey that in the findings, but I think that's sort of something that would make us feel better.
Could I make a suggestion? That we establish a line of disturbance on the we can't on the eastern side, but on the western side. So that we know that that hopefully there's going to be room for for this amount of landscaping.
I mean, they do that with the construction fencing. They have to mark the building envelope, right? So
you said a western side. Where are you talking?
Well, just look at the fentanyl space requirements for trees. Yeah, I'm I'm most concerned about Park Avenue. So look about fentanyl space. You know, that that far departments can require and and at the edge of those limits, create a line of disturbance where anything east of that cannot, you know. I mean, it's already disturbed, so it's really not allowed to disturb. But I mean, after the the thing is C O, then those trees can't be cut. Those trees need to be replaced. Those trees, you know, need that buffer needs to be maintained.
Oh, a line of a line of like required trees in the future, not disturbance while they're under construction. So I'm understanding correctly.
I think I got it.
Designate the eastern edge of the tree.
I mean, you you almost want a
impervent.
Against disturbing those buffers.
Once it's built.
Yeah.
So it's like a protection from park and from the roundabout? Is that what we're saying?
Well, I mean, that's out of our control. It's a protection from the landowners.
Yeah.
The H O A or the developers or whoever.
The general
They want better views. So they come and all of a sudden those trees start disappearing.
Yeah.
I got I got you.
I understand that. I think that Todd's right. I think it's
space.
going to be the loudest, most expensive place ever.
It's not going to help me support it, but it's at least might make it better.
All right. So do you understood. Do you need clarity on what what of these findings? Okay. Great.
Sarah?
I've got a performance based bond for five years, three to one tree replacement for trees that are lost during construction. A contingency for the roundabout if that line moves, landscaping gets added somewhere. The landscape covenant. And then there's one where I wrote trees should, and I don't know what that means.
I know. I think it's revege, like the visual.
Yeah, I think just representative
Yeah.
representation of the, yeah.
All right.
Sarah, thanks for all your work on this.
Yeah, you knocked it out.
Well, Mark was.
All right.
It takes the applicants, too. You guys worked hard on this, too.
Any any final comments before we see if we have a motion?
I don't even know if we need a motion. I think we have the direction that we need. Or do you want a motion? I mean, you're, it's not a final decision. It's just a sort of guidance and then you'll be presented with a
So you're bringing this back to us in two weeks and that's a, that's the time when we would make the, or yeah, we'd make the motion and vote.
Yeah.
All right. I concur. Sarah knocked it out of the park. You guys are very lucky you had her. But we also have a, your whole team is amazing. Okay, any final questions for us? We're okay? All set? Okay. Great. That is the end of the We have already done the report of mayor and council members. We have done other matters once, but we can do it again if anyone has any other matters.
I'd just like to encourage everybody to be sure and take a look at the video that was submitted by Shannon, each of us regarding the weed control spring and remind people that that's on my radar to not address it again a month before spring, next spring, and continuing to work on that.
Pertaining to that, maybe we could put something on the calendar when we would know that we would revisit the the spraying and weed questions, just so that that doesn't, you know, it doesn't become March and we're talking about it, but maybe some or maybe like it doesn't become June and we're talking about it. Great. Okay. So everyone, look at the scheduled meetings. There are lots. Come to the farmer's market on Thursday. Anything else, Shannon? Okay, thank you to Public Works and everyone who helped with Fourth of July. I know that's a huge lift and we got a ton of positive feedback and it really felt like a good old hometown celebration. So thank you very much for that. And the firecracker and all of so many things in town. So thank you guys for all your hard work. Really appreciate it. Okay. Meeting adjourned.